Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, November 15th regular meeting of the school committee. I would ask everybody who's here in the room to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have a pretty packed budget tonight, sorry, meeting tonight with budget discussions. So, anybody who's at home who would like to follow along, you can find our agenda materials on the website, the district website, if you go to the school committee tab. So, we are going to start tonight, and we do not have members of the student council, so we're going to go a little bit out of order, and we're going to start with arts and music budget presentations. Is that, did I get that right?
Yes.
So, Colleen, if you want to.
Welcome.
Hello.
It's nice to see you both.
Sure. All right, I'm going to go alphabetically here. Art first. All right, can you hear me? All right, so, I think most of you know who I am, Colleen Janino, Visual Arts Subject Matter Leader. So, for next year's budget as a whole, the art department, district-wide, is asking for an increase of approximately $2,268. We have an increase in funds at the elementary level and the high school level. When speaking with the elementary principals about the budget for next year, we've discussed how we need to accommodate for the increase in the student population and look at the budget with a per-student lens. Therefore, at Elmwood, we've requested an increase of $213. At Marathon Elementary, we're looking to incorporate kindergarten art into the schedule. Currently, art is not offered to kindergartners. To accommodate for this, the Marathon principal will be seeking an increase in FTE of .5, and we are looking to increase the art supply budget by $1,804. So, this increase includes a new supply budget for kindergarten, as well as a slight increase for the first grade that's already being serviced, again, to accommodate that increase in population. At Hopkins, we had already accounted for in anticipation, so the budget will be staying the same, anticipating that the population stays the same. At the high school, we are requesting an increase of funds of $533. These increases were spread out over a variety of line items, and they range from replacing broken light boxes, increasing costs of general consumable supplies for all of our courses, and replacing and maintaining worn tools and equipment. So, some of that is our 3D printing, tools like pliers, drill bits, and rehabbing our 18-year-old manual 35-millimeter cameras. I do have to say that as a department, we continue to supplement, when possible, with donations from parents and community organizations. We're extremely conscientious of utilizing the tech bids, seeking out the lowest prices for, you know, what we can get for a little amount of money. We have utilized systems in our classrooms to minimize waste. We're constantly looking for grants to write, et cetera. I'm going to circle back to kindergarten just a little bit. If anyone has any questions, just let me know. But I do want to let you know that historically, we have not had kindergarten in the, kindergarten art in the schedule. Kindergarten has been full day now for a few years, and we still have yet to catch up to this. So, in speaking with Jen and other communities around us, we recognize we are an outlier in this. So, I had reached out to Framingham, Dover Sherborne, Marlborough, Northborough, Southborough, Westborough, Mendon Upton, Holliston, and Hope Dale, all of whom offer kindergarten art. Some offer it to even the half-day kindergartners, some offer it to pre-K. So, I hope we can finally service our youngest, most excited population and sort of fill that missing link that we have. If anyone has any questions.
So, did you mention the middle school?
The middle school, we do not have any increases.
And, sorry, is this increase based on the projected student population for next year?
The kindergarten increase, we currently do not offer, it's the only related arts that the kindergartners do not receive. So, it's just not in the schedule.
Sorry, I was.
So, $1,800 of that would be for a kindergarten supply budget, and then the kindergarten principal will be asking for an increase of .5 FTE.
Okay. I don't think I was clear.
It's okay.
For which I apologize.
Okay.
Are you taking into consideration the projected number of students we're supposed to have come into the district over the next 12 months?
For kindergarten?
No.
Oh, for everything.
Everything.
Yes, we're trying to, the best that we can.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
And so, you just want $2,000? I'm just a little gobsmacked.
Mm-hmm. We're, we're not a huge department, and I think that part of what I was trying to say is we have been able to do a lot with what we have. And, you know, we service elementary school right now, Marathon, art teacher services the entire first grade, Hopkins, the entire school, Elmwood, the entire school, middle school, the entire school, and at the high school, we service 60% of the population. So.
Can I just ask about that, in terms of what that looks like? When we, obviously, we're seeing a ton of new kids come in, and I just feel like these teachers tend to teach a class at a time, right? So, if there are 24 kids, that's their art class in the elementary level, is that right? They don't combine classes or break it up?
No, they have, the middle school's a little bit different with the team approach, but the elementary, it's whatever their class teacher size is, you know, so they'll take, while the teacher would have a prep, a class would go to art or music or P.E.
So, for both of you, I mean, how are you, how are those teachers feeling with all these new kids? I mean, is it, are we at a stress point? Is it a reasonable level of students per one teacher, a number of classes per teacher? I feel like we just keep adding kids, and I don't know that we're adding too many new classrooms, but still with art in particular, and all the little hands and the art supplies and.
It's a lot. I would, I would be lying if I didn't say it's a lot. I mean, they see the whole population, it's different than being a classroom teacher in that respect. So, they're also, the elementary teachers are all part-time, so they're seeing the entire school on a part-time schedule, so.
Does it change the content that they, that they're able to deliver?
I don't think so.
Or do they, they're able to continue?
They are able to continue, I just think that it's, you know, maybe expectations are different in term, I, it, I don't want to say expectations are different, because they hold themselves to high expectations. But the more we put on their plate, you know, the more students they get, that's more students they, they have to assess, and more things they have to prep for, and, yeah, I would imagine.
I think that the teachers are doing a very good job of using what equipment they have and spreading it out as far as they can. Will we get to a breaking point?
Probably.
Probably. But I know in watching the music classes that there's a lot of sharing, so we'll set up a certain amount of instruments, and one group will do one side, one group will do the other, so everyone gets a chance, may not all be at the same time, but, you know, they're, they're working around the increased population.
Colleen, you know, even last year, you did the same. It almost seems magical, in the face of all the growth, that you managed to, you know, figure out a way to keep this minimal. I'm very excited that you're introducing art to our earliest learners. I think it's very, very important.
Thank you.
So, great job there. Last year, you spoke very emotionally and passionately about the ceramics program at the high school. Why don't we see that ask?
I would love for that position back. I have not had that conversation with the administration. You know, we're servicing the same amount of students. We're trying to still offer some sections of that, but what that means is my other teachers have made those sacrifices. We've dropped other classes, you know, there's only so much we can control with the schedule, too. So, we have the numbers, kids elect the classes, we know that they're interested in them, but there's just maybe not enough space, not enough teachers to teach them. We have ideas for new courses, but that certainly, losing FTE sort of derailed us a bit last year, so just trying to recover from that.
I, I guess I'd like to see your ambition for the program overall, K through 12, emerge. You know, I'd know, I, to me personally, of course, I speak for myself, not the entire committee, I think what you do is extremely important. To me, it's on equal footing with math and science. So, I would like to see the ask more ambitious.
Okay. Thank you. So, Ian, also, just to piggyback off of what you said, the, any positions that are being added for either of your departments come through the building, each building's budget, is that correct?
Yes.
So, the Marathon increase will come under the Marathon budget, for example?
Yes.
Okay. I also, I should, I didn't, did you have anything more you wanted to add?
No.
I share the enthusiasm to see art brought down to the kindergarten level, and the art space they have there, that we had the chance to see over the summer before the building opened, is incredible. Also commend you on how you have been able to pull things together, and such a low increase when you're continuing to add so much value to the district. Our arts programs, and I know you haven't had a chance to present, but music as well, I would include in that, are second to none in any district around here, and add so much to so many students, but in particular, students who maybe, that's, that is their passion, that's, they find that instead of a sport or instead of a particular something else, and also those who find the passion in addition to other stuff. So, thank you for.
Thank you, all of that. Okay.
Can I just add one? Do you mind if I add one thing?
Okay.
Well, you talked about the passion, and so I think that our SMLs are, in some cases, coming in very conservatively, because people are trying to be very fiscally responsible. But I did want to note that we were in a budget meeting today, and I heard administrators talk very positively about the passion, and I don't think they use the word "passion", but about the impact that Colleen has had on the art program district-wide. Some of our curriculum leaders are really secondary, but hers happens to be K through 12. So, even though you may not see some of it in this very brief moment in a school committee meeting, I think our administrators and our teachers are really happy with the support that they're getting in the art program, pre, pre-K through, through 12.
No, I, I don't think that I have any doubt on.
Yeah, just good to hear that that's what the colleagues are saying, too.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and we see that, you know, every time I walk down the hallway to get to this meeting, I always stop to watch what's on display. There's, there's beautiful pottery out there today, and some pinwheels.
That's from our Fab Lab course, which is our 3D fabrication course.
So, there's no doubt, just to clarify, on the work that's being done, it's amazing.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any more questions?
No?
Okay. You're up.
Hi. I'm Craig Heng, Music Subject Matter Leader, K through 12. And as we present budget, you know, this year, we've done the same thing as, as Colleen, we've tried to come in low, and in fact, we came in 1% under from the previous year. We did take some things out of the budget that were more wants than needs. We wanted some additional chairs, we wanted a Barry Sachs for the middle school, but we felt at this time, it was probably a greater priority to keep the budget low, and we'll deal with what we, the equipment that we have. One of the priorities of the music department is to oversee our, our school-owned instruments. We've been very lucky that over the last, what, nine months, Andrew Keely has started sort of an instrument donation program. We've received over a dozen high, great-quality instruments that we have in kids' hands already. And we've been able to purchase the last few years, some great instruments for both middle school and high school bands and orchestras. So, while we've been able to purchase many instruments as well, we still have some high-maintenance costs that are sort of outweighing the value of some of our older instruments, some of those instruments that have been around since the high school was on Main Street. So, we've been working very carefully with our music company, David French, to keep them together as long as we can. An additional priority of our, of the music department right now is, not necessarily a performance-based one, but is just to update our technology throughout the, throughout the district. We're very lucky now that we have the music room in Marathon, which has incredible technology, which Mrs. Moran is using, and just giddy about. But we'd like to be able to do that throughout the entire district, and we're trying to basically switch everything from analog to digital. So, we're very happy now that we've been able to do a lot of that at the, with the middle school auditorium. We're in the process, we have a new digital mixer now here at the high school, so we can actually record up to, if we had enough microphones, 32 tracks to, to really listen in on, on the students, if we wanted to do it that way. But one of the big issues that we do have coming up, and just to sort of keep an eye out in the future, is all of our wireless microphones that we use for the musical, that if you just went and saw the first performance of God's Bell, you would have heard, unfortunately, are in frequencies that are being sold by the FCC to digital television. So, we've already started talking with Ashok, and talking with our music association, and maybe getting a presentation ready for the HP TA, because we're going to have to replace that entire system within the next two years, probably. So, we're working, working on that. And just a few other things, from last year to this year, for this year, we ended up having to reorganize the music department a little bit, and we did lose some FTE. So, currently, Caitlin McDonald is now at the middle school, covering both band and orchestra full-time, and Cat O'Toole was moved to the middle school to serve as just .8 orchestra. Once again, you know, looking ahead and knowing how many students have been moving into the district, and we may have to be asking for more FTE to, for increased class sizes, we'll work with the principals on that, as, you know, we add more classes to each and every building. So, just in conclusion, I just wanted to say thank you to the school committee, Dr. Kavanaugh, Ms. Parsons, for both Colleen and I, just, you know, the support that you give us to have a great and vibrant art and music program is just tremendous, and, you know, we are very lucky and very happy to, to keep help working to build it and to make it even better. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
You guys rock. Really, you do. I think you do some of the most important work here, because you teach to students who may not learn as easily in traditional ways, but can fully express themselves through art and music, and that's an immeasurable benefit.
Thank you.
Gobsmacked is right.
Yeah.
I, I mean, the arts program was a distinguishing characteristic of this district that brought us here, and, you know, love it, love the, we know we're closer to the music department in my family, but I would echo Mina in encouraging you to ask for what you think is educationally sound, required. I mean, you guys are phenomenal about seeking support from the, our other organizations' grants and so forth, but, you know, if we need microphones, I mean, there's sort of things that we just need, and there are probably people that we need, and I would like to make sure that those asks are in the hopper. We're not, can't guarantee we can do them, but I would like to see them, because I, I think a lot of us value what you do, and if we don't know about them, we don't know what we're giving up. So, I hate to, to think you're just not even putting it forward if you think it's really needed. So, I encourage you to, you know, really let us know where we're stumbling, both with equipment and with people.
Love, love all the work that you do. I hear great things even from middle school students, how much they're enjoying. How is Mrs. Diamond doing? Are you in touch with her?
She is fine right now. She is enjoying some just quiet time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both so much for coming out on a very cold night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed it does not snow.
Now, right, if you can get up here right now.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, next up, we're going to take Dr. Zaleski, is that?
Yes.
Out of order?
Her commute's a little longer than Mr. Gosch's.
I think this was a surprise to Mr. Gosch.
He's like, wait, wait. She got here early for a reason.
Snow is coming.
Sure is. Good evening. So, I put my executive summary up for folks to review, it was, I believe it was a new packet, but I'm just going to start with a basic overview. So, this year, my, well, for FY '20, my budget does reflect an increase of $330,555 from the FY '19 budget, and overall, the budget increase is 13%. Primarily, these increases are due to salaries and the expenses, which I'll speak to in a moment. When you look at the salaries in my personnel summary, it's a 500, just about a $500,000 increase, due to some new positions I'm going to request tonight, as well as step, lane changes, and negotiated increases, as well as the positions that we did add in FY '19, which was the FY '19 to '20 adjustment. So, total, $355,000, the cost of the positions that I've requested. When you look at the adjustments, these are things that have already been approved by the school committee, that were brought forward to support student needs. So, essentially, it was four paraprofessionals, total of three at the Marathon School and one at the middle school. The new positions tonight that I'm going to request are multiple paraprofessionals across the district. I'm just going to quickly go down each one to, to give you an overview in terms of why the asks. So, at the high school, I'm asking for an ABA paraprofessional. We have students that are attending our Framingham State University program, and there's a requirement that you need to have a certain number, ratio of students to paraprofessionals, and in order to allow all students to have this opportunity, we need to be able to support them out in the community. Otherwise, we have to make a choice between who can go and who can't go, and truly, we want them to have that higher-ed learning experience. I am requesting a learning specialist at the high school. So, in examining caseload data, myself and Mr. Bishop and Michael Donahue went through, and we assessed all the students coming up from eighth to ninth grade, and we have just about an entire caseload of students coming up, meaning about 14, well, it was 14 students at our initial assessment. Most recently, it's about 18 now. And with their current existing caseloads fluctuating between, some, some learning, uh, learning specialists have 17, some have in the twenties, 24, 25. To add another entire caseload to their already existing caseloads is troublesome. And so, I am requesting this position to support this, the transition from eighth to nine, and to be able to adequately meet their needs per the IEP. I'm also asking for a .5 nurse at the high school. So, with the number of students we have attending our high school, there is a compliance concern and a safety concern. So, the compliance concern is, when you're over 750 students, you really should have more nursing support. That is in the regulations, and that was also brought up in the NIESC discussion. So, a separate regulation, student safety is of utmost concern, and we want to make sure we have adequate support at the high school in the event that students need medical attention or intervention, or just ongoing care for their current existing treatment plans. I am also asking for two paraprofessionals at the Hopkins School. So, one is an ABA paraprofessional to support intensive special needs students existing. So, with all the student move-ins, when students move in, we recognize who's intensive and who's moderate, and what their needs are, but we don't know the extent of their needs until we get to know the student. So, we have IEPs in front of us that may not necessarily call for this immediately, but as we're getting to know the student body and their needs are growing, where we need to be thoughtful in our planning. And so, that is why I'm requesting the, both the intensive and the moderate. The moderate specifically is for students not necessarily due to move-ins, but we have students right now that are in our intensive programs that we're diligently working with to provide instruction to, and we're stepping them down into the moderate program so they can be more in the inclusive environment and be successful. But it's difficult to make that transition if you don't have paraprofessional support. To go from an intensive environment into the general inclusive environment without that layer of support is, is not a healthy transition, because the students are going to need some layer of support. So, we're requesting that to help with that transition, and to, it does increase in dependence in the environment and exposure to the curriculum across the, across the grade spans. Also, we're requesting a paraprofessional at the middle school, this is a, and also an ABA para. We have three identified students, actually, they're coming up from the Hopkins School into the middle school, but with the existing supports that we have at the middle school, and these three students who have been identified as needing these, this level of care, we definitely need that layer of support as well. The .3 TVI is an definite in FY '20 request, and I don't, I don't know if it's okay for me to incorporate, I have an FY, it's also on the agenda tonight, I figure, well, we're talking, if I can talk about it together, because F, because right now, I have an immediate need, is that, is that okay with you folks? Okay, so, so TVI is Teacher of the Visually Impaired, and so, she has a caseload of students that she's servicing that have significant conditions that are being continuously monitored by their healthcare providers, and through recent examination of their needs, it's come to our attention that they need increased layer of support. So, not just because she's a direct care provider, but for instance, in the interest of protecting student confidentiality, I'll just speak in general terms, we have students who, because their impairment is progressing, need specialized equipment, and they're learning how to do braille, for instance, whereas last year, they didn't have to learn that level of, of intervention. So, what that means for the Teacher of the Visually Impaired is, when they have to learn new equipment, not only does she have to keep them up in, in performing, and these students, by the way, are very high-performing students, but to keep them, you know, in their AP courses and doing well, she's training them on the interventions, but she's also training them on the new equipment, and the students have the motivation, I mean, they're doing a really great job, fantastic, actually, and, but she needs the time to do it. So, in the past, we could easily use paraprofessional support to, like, enlarge materials, but because this equipment is so specialized, the paraprofessionals cannot do it. So, I'm requesting tonight, an immediate .3 increase, which I will offset in my current budget out of contracted services. Last year, when I came before the committee, I budgeted extra money in my contracted services for exactly needs like this, in unanticipated needs. So, I do have the funds to cover that this year, so we can immediately start having her, her do that. And then, I want to just keep it in the budget for the FY '20, because these students are still going to be with us and still have this ongoing need into next year. And then, a .1 out-of-district increase, so our out-of-district numbers have drastically increased, and largely this year, it's due to student move-ins who are, who are in placements. There's no budget impact to this ask, just to let folks know, because I am going to recommend a decrease of the, of the psychologists at the Elmwood School. So, just to help you understand how it works, and that's a little bit later on, but I'll speak about it while we're talking about this, we have a 1.0 personnel who is servicing both as our out-of-district coordinator and our Elmwood School psychologist. And at the Elmwood School, she's doing testing and some counseling intervention. When I met with her and Ms. Carver, the building principal, we looked at the caseload, we looked at the testing volume that she's doing, and then we also looked at her, Ms. Carver's other supports at the Elmwood School, which include school adjustment and full-time guidance in a BCBA. We felt very well-equipped to easily make this .1 decrease of, of the psychologist's presence in the building to support the .1 increase of the out-of-district. So, that, it's, it's okay, students are still going to get a range of services at, at the Elmwood School, social, emotionally, but I definitely have to have increased time in out-of-district, because right now, I have 34 students sitting in placements with a, a array of needs, and it's across the state. When our out-of-district coordinator has a team meeting, she often sometimes has to travel two hours to, to some of these programs, and then the meetings take two hours, and then it's commuting back. And it's not even because the placement is two hours away, it's traffic. I mean, some of these programs are out far away, I mean, they're out east, they're down the Cape, I mean, it's just traffic. So, we need, we need the time. I also am asking for a .2 increase of secretarial support, both at the pre-K level and in, in my office. So, at the pre-K level, it's primarily due to the volume of EIs that we have, EI means early intervention, students pouring into our Marathon School. Last year, we looked at, I looked at the assessment, assessments that we did, we did 75 assessments coming in for early intervention with our team chair, and the team chair is doing all of the, you know, assessments with the, with the other related service providers, but on top of that, she's trying to manage and monitor the paperwork, and it's overwhelming. I mean, it's really overwhelming. So, we had to even have her do some summer hours with us to catch up, it's just so to avoid that and properly plan and prepare, I'm asking for the. It's just so to avoid that and properly plan and prepare, I'm asking for the .2 increase at the pre-K. I'm also asking for a .2 of my secretarial support in my office. So due to the volume of student enrollees, out-of-district placements, and the number of requests that come in from families for a range of things, whether it's student records, legal reasons, we, we definitely need the help. How we're doing it right now is we're, we're trying to pull from building-based secretarial support to have them come in and help us with things that we are struggling to get to ourselves, which is filing, record-keeping, and things like that. But again, with the volume of requests that are coming through my office, I think this makes sense to help just stabilize it because I, I don't want to keep pulling from the building level because so many students have moved in, and there are so many needs at the building level. So it's, it's getting trickier as time is passing. So I just put a summary statement here about the new asks, and just to repeat a little bit what I said, the position, paraprofessional positions are really designed to support student move-ins, unanticipated needs, the intensive to moderate shifts in the 18 to 22 program, which is students going out to Framingham State University. The high school learning specialist is designed to support the 14 additional students excluding the move-ins. The Teacher of the Visually Impaired just supports the growing needs across the district. The out-of-district supports the student move-ins in students in placements, and then the secretarial supports increasing requests in the servicing the early intervention population. I always like to align it to something in the strategic plan, and you know, to continue our culture of continuous improvement and high expectations, I feel like these positions will support our continued efforts here in Hopkinton. So the reductions that I'm presenting tonight, I am proposing to reduce a .4 learning specialist at the middle school. So last year, we requested a .4 learning specialist as we were working to begin our BRIGHT program, our social-emotional program, and we needed this .4 to help cover some caseloads of our existing learning specialists in order to successfully implement that program. So we have successfully begun to implement that program, but with that, what I've realized in examining caseloads from Elmwood coming into, I mean, I'm sorry, Elmwood Hopkins into the middle school, we are able to comfortably next year, support with our school adjustment counselors and our clinical staff, that BRIGHT program, and using one of our special educators, and I can reduce that position. So we are able to continue our programming and comfortably reduce that positions based on the caseload. At Elmwood School, a reduction of 1.9 paraprofessional. So I call it a reduction because of the number of paraprofessionals they have right now, but that, it's not really a reduction. Those students are just shifting up. They're shifting up into the, into Hopkins. So some of these paraprofessionals are being shifted. So when you look at all the shifts across the district, although Elmwood will be down 1.9, it, they're adequately staffed, and those, those paras will be moving into the Elmwood School to support the students as they're moving up. And then the 1.0 special education coach. So we hired last year, grade two to five, special education coach to service students in both the Elmwood and Hopkins School to examine curriculum alignment, although this is a critical position to support students. My concern right now with the number of students that we have that have moved into the district, the direct care and support that is needed to them at the building level, to me, is essential. I would love to keep this position, but honestly, I feel like at this point, it's a luxury that we can't afford, and direct care has to be the primary focus right now of students getting instruction in the classroom from highly qualified learning specialists. So that's the reason for that reduction. So just to finalize my expense summary, the tuitions, the budget reflects the increase, increase in tuitions. This is due to the out-of-district placements, the move-ins, and then we also have a rate increase we get from the providers. So we plan for a 3% rate increase of the tuition. So the total in that is $237,000, and that's just as of right now. I have a student right now who's also a move-in that's in a pending placement, so this number's going to go up. But for now, as of today, that's what the number looks like. Transportation reflects an increase of $570,000, and then $15,000 in the homeless transportation costs, and it, part of that's the FY '19 budget transfer of the prepaid transportation salaries and the costs of personnel hired. We also have like van monitors and things that's incorporated into that cost, and the remaining increase of $240,000 reflects the, the transportation assessments. And finally, assistive technology, there is a $10,000 add-on I put into our, our budget to support students' needs. So for instance, when I, I have a student, yeah, either move-in or an existing student needs something like a braille reader. It's very costly, and I want to properly plan for it and have it in the, embedded in the budget. So when we're getting those medical reports from the providers, I don't have to scramble and worry about how we're going to cover that cost. So we're being thoughtful with that ask at this moment.
Questions?
I know it's a lot.
And just to preempt a little bit, so as you know, at the last school committee meeting, we presented kind of that first round of asks, which came in at 9.9, which we knew was just kind of, this is where we are, and we, we will now begin working with all departments. So, you know, Colleen and Craig, Dr. Zaleski, and people that are presenting tonight have already been given that task of, we can't do 9.9. So that's where you see some of these cuts, you know, because they've had to go back under the directive of what can we do to bring this number down. And so that's where you see some of these things that are hard choices, but that Dr. Zaleski is putting forward, and you'll see a little bit of that with the others as well.
Thank you.
So what is being presented will ultimately be lower than 9.9 because that was the preliminary high level. So what's being presented now should bring it down already?
Yes.
I had a couple of questions for you. First, I totally appreciate your flexibility and agility in trying to adapt all these new numbers.
No, thank you.
All these kids with needs coming into our schools, and they need our support. So I am concerned about the special education coach position being removed. Because even before, we had this explosion in student population. We had some real literacy needs in the elementary years that I fear will now go by the wayside. And you talk about direct care, and I get it, Dr. Zaleski, I told you I get it. But you know, direct care is also reading and writing. They have to be able to know how to do these things to navigate the system. So I'm a little concerned about that. I also know you have been inundated by trying to reconfigure the whole system and supporting these students. So you probably haven't been able to get much thought to a kind of longer-term plan about what we do here. We have over 34 students out of district. What can we do to try to keep some of them in district? How can we restructure the program?
If I can speak to that. So our out-of-district coordinator, her and I meet constantly, and so we do, I will say, we do a very good job of returning students. We've returned, over the past, this is now my fourth year, but over the, the time that I've been here, we've returned several students annually. But with special education and student move-ins and unpredictable factors, it's hard to, it's hard to really see the offset of that. Because as we're returning students, the next day, students are moving in, in their in placements. So it's constantly a push and pull with the out-of-districts. I, I think some of the things too is, you know, we look at the, the, you know, disability criteria, we look at how they're faring in the programs, we're constantly analyzing data in the programs through the, the programs themselves. We get all their progress monitoring reports. Our out-of-district coordinator goes out and she's having, conducting observations, meeting with the staff there constantly to find out the stability level of these students and whether or not they're ready for return. We also do a lot of step downs, meaning students that are in private placements, we step down to collaboratives, and then we look for them to potentially return when we're able to have them return. But a lot of them aren't ready to return, and that is just a reality, given their stability level. Sometimes it's due to their age range and needing to learn some new skills. And then the other factor is when students do move in that are in existing placements, we are responsible, and until we get to know the students, it's hard to make a determination to return them until we know them. And we have to know how they're faring in the placement. Some of them may have even been in the placement for longer periods of time, but they're typically, when we look at the data from the other districts and their IEPs and we speak to the programs, they're still in there for a reason because they're not doing well. Or they haven't learned a skill. It's not always that they're not doing well. They may not have all the skills that they need to return to the public school environment. And I say public school environment, just for clarification, collaborative is public school. It's considered public day school. It's an extension of our district. So we are working diligently, and I think, I would love to have all the students return, but we need to have the programs to be able to effectively have them return, and that's part of the reason for my working across the district to try to build the, our social-emotional programs. Because there's a portion of our students that are sitting in placements that have social-emotional needs, and if we have adequate programs, we don't have to send them out anymore, and we can also work to return them. But if nothing's built, we can't do that. So that's the other tricky part about this. But I absolutely hear you, Ms. Tyler. You know, I share your, your concern in terms of 34 students out of district, this is their, you know, hometown, this is their district. It would be fantastic to have these kids back and here and receiving all the care that they're receiving in the placements and be successful.
Yeah, because I think the families feel kind of exiled from the community too unfairly. I also think that we should consider carefully changing our programs so these students who need extra support can come back in. I haven't heard any conversation about reducing the size of the classrooms. So say you can get students who have autism, who are overwhelmed by the sensory environment, they can go into a smaller classroom, like the NEST program in New York City, which has been incredibly successful in supporting those students. I really think, I'd love to see some structural changes. Because otherwise, I see the, the cost of this just going up exorbitantly year by year. I don't see, you know, physical changes taking place to allow these kids to come back in. I mean, they're forced to come back into a class of 24. And you know, that may never work for them. So what are we going to do to welcome them back into the community and reconnect their parents with other parents?
Point, point taken. And I think we can further the conversation.
Yeah, well, I've made this point several times over a number of years now, and I really would love to see some gargantuan effort going into bringing these kids back into the community.
I just had a second question, follow-up question on the out-of-district placement. Does the 34 students include students that we are not able to, in addition to, you know, the Framingham State program that we do work with, but does it include students in the 18 to 22 population who are not able to have their needs met in our community that go, are placed out someplace else?
Oh, yes, if they were. But our 18 to 22 students, yes, we have students in the out-of-district placements.
And that's, is that counted in 34 of them?
That is, yes, that is, that is. But our 18 to 22 program that are going out to Framingham State, those students are still in district. Yes, and they're just out and going about in the community.
So I guess, tagging on to some of what Meg was saying, I know that there had been some talk when we were looking at the center school reuse about doing something a little bit different, potentially with the 18 to 22 program that might, it's unfortunately not next year, but might offer better programmatic opportunities for our 18 to 22 population.
We would love to do that.
Allow them to be in.
We would love to do that. If, if you recall, a couple of years back, we wrote a grant, and we tried to purchase a site, and then we ran into multiple barriers to allow the students to be off-site and have better opportunities in the community and better exposure. If we could have the Center School for Reuse to rebuild something, I would be very excited to join that initiative and...
Then one more, I'm sorry, one more question related to out-of-district, with regard to circuit breaker money, because my understanding of the circuit breaker money was that it, percentage of reimbursement has increased. And I know last year, we saw a large number of students increased. As I, it appears we have a large increase in out-of-district placements, but will some of that increased circuit breaker money that we'll get for students that we're currently paying for this year offset some of the increases that we're paying out for next year, or is that already considered into that number?
So I'm going to ask Susan to speak about that because she's got really the specific details on that.
Right, so the circuit breaker has already been figured in to the budget. You'll recall, last year, part of our budget struggle is the year prior to that, so FY ' '18, we were using about $600,000 of circuit breaker money. Our receivable was only $300,000. So we were doubling down on draining that account. So part of our budget struggle last year was reducing that from a $600,000 use of circuit breaker to $300,000, more aligned with what we're getting in terms of a receivable. So with the changes in out-of-district, and they did make changes in the reimbursement rate, we have a higher receivable, but we will be maintaining the level that is fiscally responsible.
Sure.
So that number is already figured into Dr. Zaleski's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Zaleski, the work that you do is extremely important.
Thank you.
And, you know, in all the asks that you have here, I have a couple of questions. What's the assumption on the growth for next year? Because this year, we saw a lot of requests middle of the year, right, related to paraprofessionals or what have you. So what's your underlying assumption of the growth?
So my underlying assumption is that we, to, to your point, because we do come, we come mid-year. So one of the asks in here specifically, I feel like at the Marathon Elementary School is where we have students, we have, we come before the school committee the most for the, the lower elementary level. So that, that ABA para at the Marathon School, based on the pre-K prediction and the, the numbers that we looked at, and the continual ask that we're, we're coming before school committee for, we did less with the pre-K with the ask because we restructured pre-K. That was a structural change that we did make, which was helpful. But those students who have responded to that structural change for inclusive pre-K environment are now in K1, and they're moving up. So we need to look at that change as well. So that para specifically to support students with intensive student needs is an unanticipated need paraprofessional. To support that assumption that based on history and us coming before school committee and also the growing numbers pouring in from EI is going to support that effort. If we cut that out of the budget right now, we would be okay for the start of the new year, of the new year. But come October of next year, Lauren and I would be back here asking for you, for a paraprofessional, because it's just the history. So that, that's my presumption. As far as the rest of the positions go, we are well supporting ourselves with this, with this configuration to support the existing students, but this also allows us enough room to support incoming students as well. Because these paraprofessionals, unless students have a one-to-one on their, on their grid, service more than one student at a time. So right now, these paras are going to service all the students that we currently know about, but there's room at the other grade levels to service the students that may come in, unless they come in with one-to-one supports. They come in with one-to-one supports, then it's going to be more tricky, but that is why I embedded that at the lower elementary, because one-to-one support typically is at the lower elementary. You can see it at the upper grade levels if it's not on, you know, if it's not off the grids. But usually, when, when you see it in that configuration, then you start talking about putting them in intensive classrooms with other types of adult supports if needed to increase independence in the learning environment. So I feel like this is a well-predicted budget for existing students that we know about that are going to be here next year in potential unanticipated needs.
So you're feeling confident about these projections at the moment?
I do.
Okay.
I do.
The other question I have is last year, during budget season, there was a request that came from you for professional development a little late. It was about $50,000. I'm wondering if there's room for, you know, any professional development that you have built in here, any plans around that?
I didn't build any plans around that. So the $50,000 professional development that I came before school committee with was a general education initiative to support special education in tiered intervention. Because we've, we're working through all of that right now in training staff with Wilson or in Gillingham, all the things that we spoke about last year, and we are following through on that, all the staff are being trained at the different levels, we don't need to continue that effort. What we need to do is implement that effort. And so that's why I don't have a big ask like that for this year, because I feel unless people resign, which hopefully they don't, I feel like we're going to have people, well-trained people in our district to support the student needs.
The last question I have is a little bit for you and a little bit for Dr. Kavanaugh and Ms. Parson. I've heard from some community members how wonderful the support for children with special needs is. This particular friend of mine who's in, who has a child in Elmwood speaks very highly of the support her child has received. And I also hear some concerns, you know, coming in from the CPAC parent group, talking about... about how their needs are not being met. So, and of course, I've heard Professor Tyler talk about the NEST program. I think she came and spoke as a parent last year, and of course, now on the school committee. And I'm wondering, as we look at the strategic plan, you know, clearly some things are working and some things which require work. And I understand the pain that she talked about when parents have to pull their, you know, whether out-of-district or what have you, when kids are not in their hometown, studying in a school, you know, along with their peers in the community. It's painful. It's painful for the kids and the parents. So I'm just wondering, what is the plan? Is it in the works, as you look at the strategic plan, to look at some alternatives, alternate models? Will there be some room for some kind of piloting a program that might work and eventually not only bring the community closer, serve our children's needs? I know it's asking for a lot, but, you know, hopefully also reduce the costs eventually in longer term, as we bring kids back into the district.
So, well, I guess I will just speak to the transitions and then I'll obviously let the two of you speak to it, too. So one of the conversations that we had at our budget meeting this morning is, so you imagine that we're putting bright programs into the Marathon Elementary School, the Elmwood School, and maybe eventually Hopkins. But what that means is you have the same three programs in three different buildings, so you have to hire three adjustment counselors in three different buildings. What would be nice is if you had, you know, more than two years in every single one of our buildings, then maybe you could have an autism program that was in one, two, three, four, five school. And that would be the school that, you know, really built a beautiful program to service children who are diagnosed with autism. And then in the other two, three, four, five school, we might have a program that would work, you know, for other students with different diagnoses. But right now, if you try to build programs, what you're doing is building multiple programs in multiple buildings in two-year stints. And I just think that that's sort of counterintuitive, I mean, fiscally and I even think programmatically. But, because if I am a kid who gets very accustomed to my bright program or autism program in my two, three school, after two years, I'm making that transition to another program that requires, you know, a re-acclimation entirely, right? So there's just a host of reasons for me to think about those kinds of things if we want to do them in fiscally responsible ways. I think we would probably want to look at different, I guess, configurations. I'm not opposed to looking at those kinds of things. I just think now that we have to think about them in terms of, you know, what will it cost? If you have an autism program and another program and another program in a physical plant that won't house three different rooms because we don't have the room in a physical plant? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand.
So I don't want to be the mistress of doom and gloom. I'm absolutely happy to look at those kinds of things. I just think we have to do it in a way that's sort of logistically sound, too.
Sure.
But I'm sure you probably have more to add to that.
No, I agree with that. And what I'll add to that is, when we look at our students in out-of-district placement, they vary in their disabilities. So it's, I don't want to mislead any folks thinking that if we built these programs, all these students would come back. Because we have many students in out-of-district placements that do not fit into that criteria. But programmatically speaking, let's put cost aside, but cost is important, but programmatically speaking, I do hear what you're saying. Because students that come into the district or that are in the district that do have that diagnosis, that could benefit from a program, it could be very beneficial to prevent future placements. It's not a guarantee if we built a program that the current students coming out would return. But autism is a very real diagnosis. And students are coming into our district every day with it, and students are being categorized with it as they're in our district. From a long-range strategic plan, I think it would be a great idea. But again, there's a cost prohibitive factor, and we have to think about as a district, what are the priorities? And that is definitely a deeper conversation for, I think, for the central office team in terms of how would we, how would we work that with the current configuration of our, of our district and what does make the most sense? And I'd love further input on that, quite frankly, from CPAC and from, from folks. I mean, I'm not opposed to getting further input to brainstorm on what, what makes sense, both from a cost perspective and a programatics perspective.
And, you know, I really do appreciate the complexity of this situation. And I know you've both been thinking about it, and Dr. Kavanaugh's been thinking about it. But I worry when I hear cost prohibitive more than I hear, you know, free and appropriate education to students with disabilities. You know, how can we serve these kids more fully instead of putting them on a van with a stranger every morning, having them do an hour drive to school that they're not familiar with, come back to a community in which they no longer have friends? I think that there's, we just need to have some frank conversations together about how to do this. And, you know, if it's cost prohibitive, well, I mean, everything is cost prohibitive. The salaries we give teachers are cost prohibitive. They're enormous. So let's think about these kids and their distress in a daily way, and they're out-of-district placements and they come back in, and they just don't have friends here. And they, and they feel excluded and they're teased. And what are we doing to help them along and give them the education that the law requires we give them?
So if I can just add to that, and I, I don't disagree with anything that you're saying, but on the matter of free, appropriate public education, what we have a responsibility to do, and what I have a responsibility to do in my role, is if we don't have a program to support a student in an effort to provide them a free, appropriate public education, I have to place them. And so I don't want folks to be misled in thinking that we're not providing that. And I know that's not what you meant. But I just want folks who may be watching tonight, who don't understand the process, better understand that it is our obligation as an educational organization to provide all students with what they need. And if we don't have it, we have to offer something outside of what we have, which is definitely has a cost impact. But in the bigger scheme of thing, again, I'm open to working strategically, but it's gonna have to involve multiple stakeholders. And we can figure out how to do that and further the conversation with Dr. Kavanaugh, with the CPAC group, to see what makes sense, given our current configuration and the current population of students. And then projections. I mean, it's hard to project when students come in district, what their disability, what they're gonna be categorized in terms, especially if they're initially being evaluated. But we can look at our existing population and how we're servicing them in our intensive programs matched against your knowledge of this program that you referenced, which is the NEST program.
Yeah. And it's not just my knowledge. I mean, there's been a lot of evidence-based research on it to talk about its success. I mean, yeah, I'm just worried, because I hear about cases, say at Marathon, where they have a little room, where if a kid is having a hard time, the kid goes into that little room, which is padded, and can go in there with another adult. And the door can be open or closed, but there still seems to be a lock on that door. And I, I just, you know, it chills me to think of a kid having a big issue like that and having to go into this small room. And why aren't we having larger conversations about how to support this kid so this kid doesn't feel tremendous amounts of anxiety? Because the anxiety is not originating in the heart of that child. The anxiety is originating in the environment in which that child might be found.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we need to think more carefully about how to place kids in our classroom who can stay in the district, but not have it so overwhelming for them that they have to go into a little room to calm down, to quiet themselves. I'm not even sure what the current phrase is yet.
Mm-hmm.
But these are real concerns.
Sure.
So I'm just, I just want to be aware of time. I don't want to cut you off, but...
No, that's okay. It's good conversation.
Yep, no, I do have a quick question, if the committee would allow. Do these numbers also include programmatic changes, improvements that have been discussed regarding ESY?
These numbers do not include ESY. So my ESY budget is leveled. It's leveled and it's stable. And so we have enough room in my ESY budget. We've, what I built last year, so we had a cost savings last year in ESY in terms of the way that I managed that budget. So I predict, even with enrollments and what we have, you know, currently existing and what we know, students are still qualifying right now for ESY, but are, based on our current numbers and then potential enrollments, we have plenty of room in my ESY budget to be able to support that. So this, there's no add-on here. I don't need additional asks for that. I just need to keep what I have to keep it going and keep it going well.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more quick one? If you scroll down a little bit, this may just be an explanation. It says transportation assessments. What is transportation assessments?
Susan has the deeper details, because she goes to all those meetings at Except. So I'm gonna let her talk about that.
Because it's a big number, yeah.
Yeah, it's a big one.
It is a big number. So we operate with a collaborative for our transportation through Except Collaborative. And so what they do in an effort to make budgeting more stable for districts is they take the number of kids that we have going out of district, the distance that they're going, assign them points, you know, if they're just coming, you know, if they have transportation on their IEP, but they're in district, you know, it's a low point. But if they're going, you know, say it's an hour drive, it's a high point. And then the cost for the transportation program of all the districts that are participating is then shared based on your students and your points. So a couple of things happened for this assessment to go up so high. One, which is a small piece, is the number of students that are using specialized transportation has increased. So that went up. The number of people that are in the cohort that are sharing that assessment, one, what I'll call a market mover, is potentially dropping out. So a huge piece of the cost, fixed costs, were shared almost fifty percent by this one market mover. So right now, this is the worst-case scenario. That district has not made final decisions. So this number could come down. It shouldn't go up. So, but in assessment model, basically what that does is, as students move in and out and placements change all the time, your transportation's not doing this. It's just level. It's fixed based on the kids, and then they do that catch-up in the year following.
Okay.
But this one is, is a big one. It's based on one of our cohorts' potential decisions.
All right. So we should call them?
[laughing].
Thank you.
Right. Meg?
One request. It's more a future agenda item request. I mean, knowing all the good work that goes on and hearing some of the concerns, can we have a future agenda item where we talk a little bit more in-depth about the programs we have for the special needs student population? Look at what's working, look at what's not working, and which way, you know, where is the innovation, where's room for innovation while being cognizant of the costs?
What I would like to do, too, and I'll look at Ms. Tyler on this, is to start that conversation in CPAC, just to lay out the bones, because we have, we have all of our program descriptions. So I would really like that future agenda item to start with CPAC, because then we can, we can analyze what we have against parent understanding of what we have, and then we can craft something together and then bring it before school committee for further discussion. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Sure. Before you go, I wanted to allow Mr. Manning, who is here from Appropriations, if you had any questions or comments for Dr. Zaleski on her budget here. Yes, absolutely. And then I also would, while you're here, if we could jump ahead to, since you had discussed the TVI.
Yes.
I would seek a motion, and I'm gonna read what I'm seeking motion for exactly. A motion for the, somebody on the school committee to approve the request of a point three for the teacher for the visually impaired.
So moved.
Second.
Second. So a motion by Mina, second by Meg. All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. And so that is so approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Zaleski.
Presentation.
Thank you so much.
Safe drive. Yes, safe drive. It appears that it is snowing.
Can you see it?
You can see it from your seat.
I can't see it.
Okay. You gotta lean in this way a little bit.
It's happening, huh?
It is happening. So with that, we are going to, want to make sure, Mr. Gosch, for technology, please. So and again, for people tuning in at home who would like to look at some of the agenda materials to follow along, this is on our district website, under the school committee, under today's agenda. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Just to talk quickly about the technology budget overview for FY twenty. I think the budget this year is going to kind of still focus in on three areas. The first priority for the district in the technology budget is to maintain the core operating system and infrastructure. The current budget will level fund our maintenance account, which helps pay for all district repairs. In addition, the tech contracted service account also supports all renewals for all major services provided throughout the district. And some of this increase in FY twenty to this account is due to new social media archiving tools required by state law to keep track of public records, and also for additional licenses needed for Power School for increased enrollment and other areas. The next area is really looking at an increase of one FTE to help fund a new webmaster position for the district, to help kind of maintain the district website and all the associated school pages. Currently, our technology staff does not have enough time to consistently update the website. Although we maintain the current website with relevant content, there are too many changing events and details that require a constant "aye" to keep up with. And then the last area is instructional technology, which provides teachers and students access to digital resources and tools, improves differentiated instruction, and heightens engagement. The presented budget will continue to maintain the core equipment in classrooms. For example, will continue to support LCD projectors, document cameras, and student devices. And finally, the preliminary budget, as presented tonight, will support instructional software. In the FY twenty budget, there's a need for additional software licenses to support struggling learners, as kind of described below, and I'll get into that in a little bit. The personnel summary, as mentioned, is, once again, one FTE for a webmaster. That would be a rough increase of eighty thousand dollars, depending on the placement and the position. That is an estimated budget item, but depending on who we can attract to that position, that may vary as we move forward. In the expense summary, the tech contracted services account, which is up about seven percent or eighteen thousand dollars this year, is a result of additional licenses needed for Power School and other district-wide software that we have. The Power School did an audit recently on our system. Our previous licensing was based on around thirty-four hundred students. As of yesterday, the enrollment in Power School was thirty-seven forty-six. So that's additional three hundred or so licenses there that will go up with Power School, and then another series of licenses will go up as needed with that new enrollment. AV accounts, we have AV accounts at each building. They're pretty much level-funded. There was a small increase of five hundred dollars at Marathon School, coming up to help maintain a larger building with more equipment. The technology maintenance account is up about six point seven percent or roughly five thousand dollars. And this is the main account that fixes anything that's broken, computer parts, screens, anything that goes down gets repaired out of this account. Overall, instructional technology, this is kind of a brief summary of all the different schools, right? So each school has its own instructional technology account. I try to highlight some of these questions.
Is it possible to show what you're talking about?
Uh, yes, if I, as the technology director, could connect. But the Apple TV display went off, so I apologize for that. If I can get it going, I'll...
Screensaver's a little mesmerizing.
Maybe they never tell you which city that is, so we end up guessing. That is...
Sorry about that.
That's great.
I was trying to go old-school, just paper pencil. Can people see the screen, or is that too...
A little bit bigger, perhaps? Or does it work for Mr. Manning?
Yes, you can have it.
I was gonna say, I do, too.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Yes, thank you.
All right. So the technology maintenance, we talked about instructional technology, as I said, this is kind of highlighting the key areas where there were some increases. So this, Hopkins is one instructional technology account, and I have a graph I can show you after, but is one area where there's an increase of six point seven percent. And that, that increase at Hopkins is due to the new Chromebook lease that was purchased this year, and that will continue next year. The middle school's up because of a, the new Chromebook lease that started... The middle school's up because of a, the new Chromebook lease that started this year, and then the middle school's up for a new teacher lease starting in FY '20. So those are the main increases, and that account still, as you can see, you know, overall is, is down, right? So we're, we're up in those two areas, but overall, year to year, we're, we're down because of some of the other accounts having leases that have dropped off. So even though we're adding still new equipment, we're down overall in those accounts. Library accounts, for most part, are, are down. Each, each count has a library count, or each school has a library count that typically pays for the library databases, OPALS. It's pretty consistent in each building, and there wasn't an increase this year on the renewal, so that account will actually be slightly down, $786, not huge money. The next area, which is kind of up this year, is instructional software. Once again, I try to break it down per building. So Marathon School is up quite a bit because of additional students and because of, really, the area of Lexia and a software tool that helps support literacy and reading. Because of a decrease in numbers last year, jumping up to the enrollment we're at, it's, it's quite a bit of an increase at Marathon School. Elmwood is up as well in licensing and software, primarily because of an increase in Lexia. We had identified some struggling, struggling readers this year, and we needed to purchase and prepare to buy additional licenses to support those students. Hopkins has a slight increase of 10%, 10.7% due to software. Learning A through Z is another learning support tool utilized by special educators in the buildings. Middle school, we did have an increase in iXL and another software tool called iReady. In iXL, we've added ELA. That was budgeted last year, so that's not a new ask for the middle school, but it's kind of transferred from, hopefully, the middle school English department area to me. So I've now taken ownership of iXL for both ELA and math. Last year, it was just math, this year, it's math and ELA, thus the increase at the middle school. Pre-K has had a small increase of roughly 20%. It's a 20, it's a big percentage, but not a big dollar amount for additional boardmaker license, which helps special ed teachers and students. The last, you know, kinda big account that we maintain year to year is our professional development account. That is level funded. That account primarily is designed to offer teachers curriculum hours to develop curriculum, to train them in one-to-one technologies, but also to help train technical staff on software tools that we use to maintain equipment in the district. So that's kinda split among those areas, and that is, has been level funded. And then if people need breakdowns of various areas or highlights, I kinda have some charts, if that helps answer questions, kind of as we move forward. This kinda gives you a breakdown of the instructional tech in the building. So you can see, mostly instructional tech is down in most of the accounts. So these are more specific numbers of all, all the accounts. High school has decreased because the graphic slab lease ended, and as you can see, some of the other leases ended, so the accounts are down.
Mr. Gosch?
Yes.
You have visibility into licensing. Do you have visibility into, to what degree the licenses are being utilized?
Yeah, to, to some extent. I mean, there's a wide variety of types of software we have, right? So we have teachers utilizing free software tools, we have teachers utilizing premium tools where we're paying for them, and then we kinda have larger implementations of big programs like Star Math and some other district-wide licensing that we've, we've put in. So most of the premium tools, like Lexia, like Star, all have insight and backend tools that can give you detailed usage reports that we kinda look at to see how they're being utilized by teachers and by students, and how successful they're being. Some of the free versions of tools, you don't necessarily get access to some of those insights because they want you to have the, the premium versions to get some of that, or they just don't exist.
So things like Lexia, which I know nothing about, and we, we have licensed, teachers value this, and they're using it, we see that it's being used.
Correct, it's definitely being used. We've looked at the licensing and the usage over years, you know, prior to Dr. Kavanaugh, you know, previous superintendents had the same, same question, you know, are these tools not only being utilized, but are they being effective?
Right.
So, you know, more than annually, we're looking at those reports. I am as a leader, principals have access to it, and then teachers are seeing this on a more regular basis. And so they're seeing their own class, their own individual kids, they're seeing the growth from kind of month to month, and we have access to that, and we're looking at those details.
Okay, thank you. Piggyback off that question.
Sure.
One of the things I chatted down, do, when you do licensing, do you license a student or a machine?
Um, most, it depends on the company, but most companies have moved to subscription-based licensing, which is typically now student-based, based on student enrollment.
Okay.
The old, the old days, it was much like you bought Adobe, you bought Adobe for the building, it didn't matter how many kids you had in that building, you paid a certain amount. Now, it's cloud, Adobe Cloud, it's based on the individual student, individual student has a login, they can use that, and they can keep track of how many people are, are using it, and then charge us appropriately.
So that, for Lexia, for example, with the 200% increase, it's because each kid at Marathon is receiving a Lexia account?
At Marathon, each kid is. So at, at Marathon, we have enough licenses for every kid. At the Elmwood School this year, we are trying to use it only for about 130 kids, or 100 of the kids that were struggling identified by the principal to get some extra support. We had larger numbers of Lexia in previous years in the budget cuts last year. We did try to reduce this area because we were struggling to find money for people, and so we did make some cuts, but we're able to bring some of it back. And so this is just anticipating continuing with those licenses next year.
Okay.
Could I piggyback on your question, please? You said that these items, well, Lexia's being used, and that it is effective. Is it more effective than using a book and a piece of paper and a pencil and a chalkboard or a smartboard? Because it seems to me we're hemorrhaging a lot of money on these little electrical devices to which all the kids are extraordinarily addicted.
Sure.
And so why are we feeding their addiction with taxpayer money? Is it really making that huge a difference in how well they learn to read?
Yeah, I wouldn't say it would never, I wouldn't say any technology is completely gonna replace an educator. So I would never sit here and say that Lexia is gonna be better than a literacy coach, per se, on a one-to-one basis. But in absence of a literacy coach or a staff member, and you have a large class of 24 students, and you're spending time, and you're working in centers, and you're working with some kids individually, those other kids can have an opportunity to get some differentiated instruction by using a tool like Lexia that's catered specifically for their need based on their reading level. But then the teacher can get those diagnostics from that device and then come and support that kid individually. So in that type of environment, I think it is effective, but I don't think the goal is to use the tool to teach the kid how to read. That is not, that is not the way we're, we're using this tool. It is a tool to support and to help differentiate when teachers are working one-on-one with other, with other kids.
So it's also a babysitting tool?
Um... I can add to that a little bit, if you want me to.
Yeah, sure.
Cause I'll take a little bit of ownership, and I didn't realize that we went up plus 238% or whatever you have on there for Lexia. But when I came into the district, I was very surprised to see the very small number of Lexia licenses that we had in our schools. And I appreciate what Ashok is saying, that there are very severe, you know, it was a serious budget issue last year, and I appreciate that there was a reason why the cuts were made. That is probably the number one program that I see schools and reading specialists and teachers getting excited about using because of the fact that it's research-based, it's endorsed by the National Reading Panel, it goes through every component of phonics, phonemic awareness. For the early literacy, for the ages of the students, especially at K-1, 2, it's absolutely, to your point, Meg, it's not a substitute, it's not a teacher. But when we're looking at a classroom where we expect our teachers to be calling small groups and differentiating centers, it is something that's appealing, it's research-based, and I will tell you that even back when I was a principal here, I remember very clearly, so now we're going back eight, nine years ago, Mark Boivier saying, Jen, you know, I can see these kids, and they're on Lexia, and sometimes there's a kid who will sit there in 15 minutes, I can pull up their report, and I can see, hey, so-and-so, he didn't do anything in 15 minutes. I'm on it, I'm on the reports, I'm in contact with parents in terms of student progress, but it really, it really addresses very critical early literacy skills, never to take the place of a teacher, but it is complementary in terms of the skills that we expect students to master at those levels. And I can't tell you, like, the hugs and kisses that were coming through the computer when we were emailing teachers, saying, we've got some licenses back, and Ashok was really gracious, and finding a way to do that very, with very quick turnaround this year. But I do appreciate, to your point, like, Lexia is a program that if you don't use it 15 minutes a day for a total of an hour a week, it's not going to have its maximum potential, so, you know...
And if you have a learning difference, it does it. I mean, my son used it every day for a year or two, and it didn't help.
And there's no, and to your point, every student is different.
Yeah.
But for the majority of students, it has been proven as a tool that, that has been effective, and...
And, and what is the percentage of the day that they spend doing Lexia, do we know?
Well, the recommendation is 15 minutes a day.
So in school or out of school?
It could be a combination. So in some cases, we'll say, okay, you know, we can fit it in three to four days a week, and then the expectation would be, can you do another 15 minutes at home? But I think, kinda to your question, Amanda, that's something that we really have to track, because we don't wanna be paying for licenses and then seeing them not go to use, and to see them not being used to what the research says they should be.
Yeah, cause I, I would imagine if you are studying how students are doing on it, you would be able to detect rather early on that they're having difficulties learning to read.
Yeah, and but a teacher, that's not going to be the only way a teacher's going to determine, that that will be one, it's one indicator for a teacher. But the fact that it's adaptable, kinda like one of the other programs that Ashok mentioned that we're testing out at the middle school this year, iReady Math, it is something that is very easily adaptable to students, and it, the program matches where the students are. And so students feel successful, it's engaging, and this is kinda the world that our students are living in.
Yeah.
They like electronics. So we don't ever wanna be in a classroom where we're substituting electronics for teacher, but...
I agree, they're very addicting things, look at us all.
What do you mean?
But, you know, 15 minutes a day is, is quite a small amount of time for such a lot of money being spent on this. So I'm just thinking out loud how much we're investing in that, and what about an extra 15 minutes of recess, and maybe that will inspire them to think better when they're actually using pencils and paper.
So we don't see actual dollar number, we hit the percentage, do we hit?
I can look.
I think it's up to 18,964 from 5,600, right? It's on page 35.
Thank you.
From 5,600, so about from 6,000 to 19,000, looks like, for that specific item, the 238% increase.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, Ashok, a lot of the software for this fiscal year, we were actually able to purchase through the building project, so it was not something that was in our FY '19 budget.
So it shows as more of an increase than it actually is in terms of what's being used.
Correct.
Right.
So it's, yeah, if we have roughly 500 licenses, let's say, at, at Marathon School, you know, at an average cost of $15, we're predicting $15 to $20 a license.
Can I, I ask a question that is related to this, but kind of a different angle on it. I had a question from a parent, and it, it's totally fine if you don't know the answer to it, but maybe you could, you could email about it. Do we use currently Google tools for special needs on the Chromebooks as an add-on at all, or are we able to?
Yeah, it depends on, it depends on the, the need, so it's, there's definitely different tools that are available, and some, some students have access to certain tools based on an IEP.
So we are able to use those as well.
And there are some free tools that they have available on top of that. You know, so, for example, some students have access to ReadWrite, which is an add-on to, to Google that has a number of different functions that help, helps...
That's actually the specific program I was thinking of.
Yeah, so, so we don't have, you know, district-wide licenses of that, we just, cause we can't afford to do that, but we try to get it for the kids that really need it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking again at page 35, which is the Muni report. So if I'm understanding this correctly, the overall increase is 5.9%, so it brings the technology budget to about 2.1 million, is that accurate?
Correct, yep. I think without the new position, it's roughly an increase of .6%. So I think a, a larger part of the increase, overall increase is due to the new FTE.
Sure. So actually, I'm, I'm excited that the work on the website, much-needed work on website, is underway. I'm wondering if you have considered, you know, either a part-time webmaster or even someone on contract that could come in and help for a little bit, rather than a FTE, which has a long-term effect? I wouldn't imagine that, you know, I would think that initially, there's a lot of work to be done to get things going, but over a period in time, is the 80,000 salary, $80,000 salary, plus increases justified, given the student growth, I would think most of our money should go into getting our teachers, so that's, that's a thought.
Sure, and I have given it a lot of thought, and I think when you look at it just solely as a webmaster, you know, I would definitely consider a part-time position. You know, based on, you're right, on a day-to-day basis, just updating average content, could a half-time person do that? Probably. The other factors to consider, though, is, at what level is the community and the school committee expecting things to be up to date, and how perfect would that need to be? And to meet that expectation, I would think a full-time better allows us to do that, simply because things change so quickly. So if it's a part-time person, maybe they're working every other day or certain hours a day, an event changes, the responsibility of still now changing that event is gonna fall back to one of us and not necessarily the webmaster, because they're not working during that particular time. So the, the struggle possibly with the schedule and their ability to not meet those expectations was one concern. The other concern is the technology department as a whole, you know, lost 2.6 FTE last year. So we lost two full-time tech integration people, and we lost an administrative support person. So out of the salaries, my, my .6 support person was, was removed, and we now have a shared person with assistant superintendent. Beyond that, I look at the fact that we've taken on additional responsibilities. So for example, we've centralized registration district-wide. The technology department has taken ownership of most of that process, so Megan, our support person, is primarily on a day-to-day basis dealing with daily online registrations that take up a lot of her time. So when I look at this position, and I talk to other principals and other people at the central office, I see it as also a position that's gonna help us with a lot of other things. You know, hopefully, primarily account management, other central office tasks, where we've kind of really consolidated over the last, you know, nine years. I mean, the central office footprint now compared to where it was nine years is quite small. Yet, the enrollment's gone up, our responsibilities have gone up, and so we've, we've been able to continue to, to grow at the rate we're growing because we've put in place some efficiencies, right? So we're a little more efficient with the way we do registration, the way we do collect data, and so, yeah, we can get by with less, less people, but 2.6 positions less for us taking on more responsibility has been a challenge already this year.
Sure.
And so when I, when I look at that, I, I do see it as a webmaster position with some other responsibilities. You know, even Kim Polnick, HR, has talked about needing some extra help with recruitment and promoting recruiting, and that person could possibly help in that area. And so we had some conversations about how else we could utilize that position if it was a full FTE, so...
Right, right. No, so, Ashok, I don't wanna give the impression that there is no need. What I do know is that technology area requires those specialized skills, which are expensive to hire, right? So my suggestion is primarily coming from the fact that, is it that we could start with a part-time this year, and perhaps the following year, look to see where we are in increase? And, you know, we have to set the expectation straight for our community, that with the growing increase, where is our priority? Is our priority in having a top-notch website first, or is it in having, you know, the classroom needs of students met?
True.
So that's where it's coming from.
All right, and I agree with that perfectly. Obviously, you know, classroom and educating kids is, is a priority, and so we're, we're open to considering a part-time position. I'm not opposed to that.
The other question is, again, I, I think back to some of the conversation around licenses. Clearly, we are getting a lot of licenses, and, you know, I, I think I had shared... Clearly, we are getting a lot of licenses and, you know, I think I'd shared this over the past year, that I'd heard, you know, the ophthalmologist talking about, "If I could, I would want to take technology out of kids' hands in elementary grades. They need more outside time, sunlight, it's absolutely needed." But obviously, these have become part of our lives. So, where is the balance and how can we see that? You know, I understand the two million dollar budget and how much you support, right? These things working today, you know, this thing coming up, these are, you know, like buildings and grounds, as long as it's perfect, no one even understands the work that goes behind it. So, all of that is appreciated. What I'm looking to understand is the impact of this to kids, especially in the elementary grades, K through five. What is the time we are spending on this? What is the actual benefit? You talked a little bit about differentiation and I know Meg spoke about her son. My son did not like Lexia, although I know of other kids who love Lexia. He loves Ten Marks and I know all these options are available. So, some insight into what, you know, some of this work that goes on, I think that'll be very helpful.
Sure. Yeah, we would definitely, you know, look at that. I guess, I think some follow-up conversations about what that looks like. You know, is this something you're considering talking about full, full research, where we're going to research the impact of a particular software or what's the overall impact of, you know, one-to-one computing on students? I think is a bigger conversation so we can kind of clarify what the expectations are, what the goals would be of that project and then we kind of look at how we go forward with it.
Right.
Because it's something that we would be interested in helping achieve, but at the same time, looking at our current staffing, that's going to be a hard thing to do as a department internally without some outside help. And some schools have looked for outside help to do and run some of those studies. We participated with a company called Sun Associates in year one after the one-to-one program. We worked, we took a cohort of our, our staff, went to Sun Associates. Sun Associates does this type of research across, across the country. They taught us how to, how to do a program evaluation and we did a program evaluation of the one-to-one program at the high school. And that was, that was effective. It told us some things, but when you weigh the, the time it took versus the information we got, we weren't quite sure that the impact and the information we got was, was worth almost all the time that we put into it. And the researchers would come back and say, say some of the same things that they've seen with their work with other, with other districts. So, I think it would be helpful to have a follow-up conversation to kind of target exactly what type of feedback we would want to, to try to look at what types of study or what type of work we could do to get at that information.
Sure. I know for one that I've asked this a couple of times.
Sure.
So, I'm happy to sit down with you with permission from Dr. Kavanaugh, too. And I guess the bottom line is this, right? We need to know the return on our investment here.
Sure.
Right? So, that accountability measure should be managed in, again, my opinion. So.
And I, and I agree with that. And I guess we would have to kind of define what that accountability looks like. Is, is the school committee interested in looking at, you know, what is the impact of one-to-one devices or technology in achievement scores? Like, are we targeting, are we trying to improve MCAS scores? Are we trying to improve, you know, personal well-being? So, there's a lot to kind of dig in and look at that before we can really get specific. But I would be happy to sit down with you and talk more about it.
Sure. That's a conversation we could maybe come back to at a different date, just as a committee to come to a consensus on what it is.
Sure.
Can I ask a quick, quick organizational question? Kind of along, a little bit following on that. In terms of thinking about the budget and the headcount, so, when we, we went learning tools like Lexia, my assumption was that it would come from the curriculum, the teachers or the curriculum with the principals would kind of typically find something and then ask you to maybe research it and purchase it, support it, install it, et cetera. And when it comes to things like surveys, I mean, data analysis, and there's, there's so much, the, the whole IT arena has obviously blossomed in, you know, the last ten years. So, it is possible that your department is, you know, doing information, business information analytics, like what Mrs. Henderson does or, you know, like, it would be interesting for me to know what the services are that your department is providing. Like, and when we talk about adding a webmaster, which I can definitely say through the website analysis, the content management piece is a big piece that's going to make our website support our goal of being transparent and providing information and whatever. And to do the content right, we are going to need somebody at some level in the middle. But I'm wondering, what are the services that we can ask the technology department for? Like, if we want to start doing regular surveys on social emotional well-being, if, we haven't said we're going to, but if we did, would you help set that up? What, I mean, is that an ask that comes to you or is it something that stays with the teacher or the principal? If we want to look at MCAS data or financial data or just pulling data period from all the databases, does that come to you guys or does that? Like, what are the services that we are looking for you to provide? Like, that's.
Sure.
Because I think the web, the one point oh for the webmaster, I can, I can definitely see me as a point of a, a part-time webmaster. And I'm wondering, I know there are a lot of demands. The closer I am to your department, I see the myriad of things that come your way. So, I think it would help to maybe define what you guys are trying to provide and, and understand the difference between what you provide and maybe what comes from the teachers or the building.
True. And there, and there is a process. I know you had kind of a question earlier about, you know, what standards do we look at? And when we look at procuring a new software tool, you know, there is a process in place, you know? So, there, you know, for example, in the Lexia world, I mean, that obviously did start from, from teachers and from previous curriculum directors, kind of getting together and looking at a variety of tools, identifying criteria and then making a selection originally for that product. So, almost like an RFP process on a, on a bigger purchase like that. So, there are processes where teachers can try tools, can pilot tools, they get permission from CTLs or curriculum or department leaders. If that grows and meets kind of district needs, we might kind of help purchase a small pilot or consider expanding that as needed if it's in alignment with what, you know, the standards are and what the teacher goals are. So, there is that kind of vetting process in place. So, depending on the size of the purchase or where it is, you know, it's, there's like all the way up to a full RFP versus some teacher trying an individual free app, you know, by themselves.
Mr. Manning, do you have any questions for Mr. Gosch? Great. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Unless anyone else has any other.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Hopefully, the snow is not too much of a deterrent out there.
I hope not.
So, it.
Come back in and talk to us some more.
You can let us know if it is, though.
Yeah.
Mr. Person.
Did you have to go last because you're not going to be here all night?
So, the current snow is.
Do you have the huts?
Did you look out there?
I did. It's probably, you probably got about a good inch. By the time you guys wrap up, you'll be at about four inches.
Really?
Talk fast, Tim. Talk fast.
So, buildings and grounds, as you guys know, I'm the director of buildings and grounds. My budget overview is to help support our current infrastructure of a hundred and twenty-plus acres and six hundred and twenty thousand roughly square feet of building that we maintain and clean on a daily basis. So, kind of the key factors that go in for us, so for this budget this year is a personnel summary. My request for this year is to add two additional maintenance people at the cost of ninety-four thousand dollars. These two positions will help us with the day-to-day maintenance of the buildings and grounds, the requests that come in, so on and so forth. So, the expense summary, which is, the increase in expenses, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Most of that is utilities and contracted services and extraordinary maintenance. The utilities really come from the Marathon School and the additional square footage we picked up there. These numbers that we've put forth for this year are based on, we don't have any history to base it on. So, we're going by just our couple months of experience and what we project out to be for the next year. The maintenance supply accounts have been increased for park, things such as parking lot striping, and then again for Marathon School for a maintenance supply budget. I think the belief out there is because it's a brand-new school that we don't have to put a lot of money into it. And we don't for fixes like big HVAC fixes and stuff like that. We're still under warranty, but what we do have to do is maintain the filters and do preventative maintenance on a lot of the building infrastructure so we can ensure that it runs properly, you know, going forward. The system maintenance of equipment, we just kind of increased that to meet FY eighteen actuals. And the maintenance of equipment is the vehicles that we have, the tractors, the trucks. And as these things start to age, you know, tires, ball joints, you know, all that kinds of fun stuff that we do on our personal vehicles day-to-day, really, kind of, you know, go into this stuff. So, so maintaining the equipment is going to kind of keep increasing until we hit into our capital plan and we start replacing some of this aging equipment. Extraordinary maintenance, so we're up twenty thousand dollars roughly from last year. And this is to, you know, fix some of the, again, aging, aging pieces of buildings. Like, at the Elmwood School, we have some shades that are torn, ripped, or don't function. The gym partition walls, these seem to be kind of an ongoing thing for us. As the buildings age, these need to be maintained, the tracks, so they, you know, so they open and close freely so the wellness teachers have the opportunity to separate classes as needed. The middle school, we, we want to fix the concrete in front. As you walk into the middle school, I don't know if anybody has noticed, it's kind of deteriorated over the years. There's big gaps in it, could, you know, be a tripping hazard or, you know, at the very least an ankle, ankle sprain. High school, we have the broken water feature out front here. I don't know that it's worked in a number of years. We'd like to try to figure out something better to do with that. And, and then in the district, we would like to administer drinking water testing, which we've done in the past. We had a grant, this is prior to my, my time here, we had a grant to do so. They went through and tested all the drinking water, all the potable water in all the buildings in the district. Picking back up on that, we'd like to see where we stand today with that testing, make some improvements and move forward with that. And then the steps from field one to field three. I don't know if anybody goes to the football games and walks down them, but they're, we're starting to replace rotting boards and stuff like that. We think it, it's really time for an upgrade for safety reasons. So, the overall, so the overall increase to my budget because of the two new employees and some additional overtime would be two hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. And with that, I'll take some questions. I'm sure you have some.
I think you, first of all, you do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Taking care of stuff. And like I was saying to Ashok earlier, as long as things are fine, people don't even notice the work that goes on. But you do a fantastic job from the time you have come, you know, you brought a lot of energy into this area.
Thank you.
The question that I have, you know, clearly the things that you're talking about with regard to maintenance, absolutely see that.
Yeah.
You know, Elmwood, the middle school, they, they require a facelift for sure.
Yes.
Right. And of course, with the growing need, now, last year when we planned for Elm, for Marathon, we did plan for some growth and, you know, we had gotten some custodial support at that time.
Yeah, we added a full-time position for custodial.
Right. And again, while I am not questioning the, you know, the need to have all these services, knowing how much growth we are anticipating, forget twenty twenty, just in twenty nineteen.
Sure.
I would still think that our focus would go a lot into the classroom and the teachers and whatnot. So, I'm wondering, for the two personnel requests that you have, what would it mean if you didn't have it?
So, I think, I think it would start to affect our preventative maintenance program that we've been trying to instill over the last year. So, we, currently, we play a lot of catch-up, you know? So, if you'll see, if you'll see the landscaping out front is looking a little tired, it's because we're focusing on the inside of the building and trying to fix, you know, the main infrastructure for the classrooms. So, I think, so I think without adding positions, that's a lot of what we'll, we'll just kind of keep running and maintaining what we have. And the guys do a fantastic job and, you know, all the credit that you give me, I have to give to them because they're doing the work out there and, and I appreciate them for that. So, I think it's just additional support, you know, to, to help maintain. You know, I think ultimately what would make sense for the district is to have a maintenance person in each location that takes care of the day-to-day needs of the, of the staff and the students and takes care of the building. You know, when you have people who jump from building to building, I think you lose a little bit of the consistency in, in the maintenance programs. You know, this person's going to do filters or they did half the filters and this person's going down the next day, they don't know where they left off. So, I think, and you pick up expertise, is, you know, everybody has a little different skill set, at least that's what we look for when we're hiring people. Somebody may be better at HVAC and so on and so forth. So, I think that's, you know, I think the request is, you know, to try to get us to that level of maintenance that the buildings are starting to need, as you guys have seen over the years, and to prevent some of the newer buildings, this building, Hopkins and the Marathon School, from falling into some of the disarray that we had with Center School and we're dealing with Elmwood now.
No, I, I appreciate you being proactive.
Yeah.
I've certainly seen that.
Sure.
I'm just throwing it out there and I said the same to Mr. Gosch. Is there a possibility for part-time rather than a full-time employee? So, something for you to consider.
Sure. Sure. I think part-time would be difficult. I think if, if given the choice, I would, I would eliminate one ask position and, and ask for a full-time position just for consistency.
Sure.
But, like, you know, like, like Mr. Gosch, I'm, I'm open-minded to anything, right?
Right. And again, I'm one voice here.
Sure.
Could you just, just from my own learning, just distinguish between custodial and maintenance?
Sure. So, the custodians essentially take care of all the cleaning on the inside of the building. And so, we have a head custodian during the day who takes care of, you know, student activity, lunch, lunch duties. They do, you know, they're the head custodian, so they're doing all the supply orders and, you know, doing the, kind of the, the jobs of what happens during the day when kids are in school. And then the night custodians are doing a bulk of the cleaning, you know, so they're doing the classroom sweeps and, and washing and vacuuming and cleaning the restrooms and so on and so forth. Maintenance really focuses on the, you know, the bigger issues, you know, if the, you know, so a custodian may be able to, and I'll use a restroom as an example, plunge a toilet to get a clog free. But if the issue persists, you need somebody with a little more skill to be able to, you know, diagnose the problem and take care of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, given that the, the overtime requests, I would just, are those primary, primarily custodial? Or, I'm just, I'm looking if we add maintenance people, will it impact the ability to decrease the overtime at all?
So, I think, I think minimally. So, our overtime for maintenance is typically during the winter, during snow events. So, we have kind of all hands on deck. They'll be here tonight at some point and they'll be, we work closely with the DPW to, to make sure that the schools are ready to be open in the morning. So, that's a lot where our maintenance overtime goes. A little bit can go to sports at times if there's events happening, you know, field three, we have a maintenance employee work that, you know, those, those games. Custodial overtime, we do, I would say a bulk of the custodial time, we charge back through our, our use, our building use, but we, we do hit, you know, events from the school itself, basketball games, plays, you know, so on and so forth, micro event is a big event that we hold here, that we don't, we don't charge back for that.
School committee meetings?
School committee meetings, sure.
No, that makes sense.
Yep.
And I would echo what Mina said, your department really does keep things in a very nice, in you.
Thank you, yeah, they, they work hard.
Much appreciated.
We appreciate them, yeah.
Can I ask a quick question about utilities?
Sure.
The utilities increase, are we looking more gas or electric, where are we?
So, Susan can probably help me with this, but I think a little bit of both, you know, so the, maybe...
Yeah, so there's, there's two factors in here, and this is a little bit to kind of what Karen had to make up for, so we had transferred prepaid tuition, the school committee did a budget transfer from that to cover the salaries. We also did the same with a one-time rebate for utilities that was deposited into the Marathon account, so this is to bring that back up, so while that budget transfer went to salaries, so when you look at 19 to 20, your salaries is a little bit less of a change because of that expense transfer, but the, the bottom line is, we're not increasing the electricity in terms of this budget, we're pretty comfortable with that, and both the electric and the gas came from the engineering estimates when they put together the budget for the building project. Tim and I are both a little bit uncomfortable with the gas estimate, so this increase really is the gas estimate, and what we did is we aligned it to a building of, of similar square footage, which really is the Hopkins, so we brought the gas up to be in line with Hopkins, we're a little more comfortable with the electric estimate, but the difficulty is, we still have no experience in, in what the reality of it is. So the increase in the gas is actually 60, around 60,000, the remaining increase, that 127 is the use of that rebate.
Okay.
So it's two factors that make it look really high, and it really is only the adjustment to the gas.
Thank you. It's probably a very simplistic and silly question, but at home, I would just sort of turn the thermostat down if my budget was a little...
Sure.
I know it's kind of crazy, but I do see a lot of students who go straight through the winter in short sleeves, you know, no big deal, and the buildings are really warm, and I always just kind of wonder if we tip the thermostat five degrees cooler, I mean...
So we, we do make attempts, we, we have building management systems in each one of the buildings, varying in degrees of complexity, obviously at the Marathon School, it's a brand-new program, so we do night setbacks, and so on and so forth, to bring the, the heat down to, like you would do at home, you know, so, you know, we're setting the thermostat at 60 when we go to bed at night, right? So that's kind of what we do at all the schools, during the day, we have to maintain a temperature between 68 and 72 degrees. So the average, what's great about the building management systems is I can really kind of follow them, the average at the Marathon School is about 69 degrees. Now, some classrooms will be 72 degrees, and some classrooms will be 68 degrees, but, you know, they're never really perfect when you, even in a brand-new building, these systems, the way they work, they're never really perfect to where the whole building's going to maintain the same temperature. But we do, and we do the same thing with the lighting programs down there, we, we have that on, on setbacks, and like the outside lighting, Jen knows, she's in those meetings...
I'm shaking my head because we're in there at meetings at night, and everybody's got the coats on, it's nighttime, you know, sunning right now, yeah, and we're all freezing, yeah.
But even like the streetlights outside, they're set, we can change the percentage of the, of how they're lit during the year, so in the summertime, we may bring that percentage down to 50%, where you don't need as much light, and in the dead of winter, we might be closer to 80%, never 100, because they're, they're so efficient, but, but we have those capabilities in, in some of our, some of our buildings, yeah.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Mr. Manning, do you want, do you want to add anything, or any questions?
Just for clarification, because I think I may have just asked the same question as we already asked, but you, last year, in the last year's budget, you budgeted certain facilities for Marathon School, and are you saying now that you, that you underestimated that increase, you increased that for the 2020?
So there's, there's a potential, so we budgeted this year's budget based on the engineer's estimates, both for electric and gas. The gas is extremely low, and even when they gave that, me that estimate, I was like, hmm, that's the number that we're still uncomfortable with, so we did increase that beyond what the engineer's estimate is. Now, as the year comes on, now we're, we haven't hit winter yet, you know, maybe their estimate will prove true, and we can bring that number back down, but without having experience, I'm uncomfortable with doing that.
But actually, as you approach the final numbers, maybe January, February, winter is the idea?
Yeah.
That's what we need, is we need a couple of months of winter to get an idea...
Nobody needs winter!
You don't need a couple of months.
Starting today! But, but that's, both Tim and I are uncomfortable with that estimate, so yes.
Next question is, with turf fields, is there any perceived savings in maintenance costs?
So I think there's shift, there's shifted costs because of it, you know, so we're, we're going to take, you know, we're going to take the, kind of the money and the hours that we would have spent down on those turf fields, and we'll reinvest it into some of the other areas that may have been a little more neglected through the years. There is some maintenance that is required on the turf fields that we'll have to attend, you know, making sure the trash and leaves are, you know, so you maintain it as a field in the sense of cleaning it up, you just don't have to spread grass seed and mow it, but there is, there is a little bit of maintenance that's required with the field, that we'll continue on with, yeah.
And Tim, what was the recommended nighttime temperature, you said, 60 degrees?
Um, yeah, so, how's it feeling here, it's about 65?
It feels like it's going, yeah.
It's dropping, it is dropping.
I was, I have Amanda on my side, so you guys, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Marathon has such open spaces.
Yeah.
Right, huge.
Yeah, the good part about Marathon, too, is it's really, it's a very efficient building, you know, so when you're not occupying a classroom, it has a sensor in there saying that you're not occupying it, both lighting and air conditioning-wise, you know. Now, in some of the smaller rooms, that can become an issue, because it'll, it'll drop it too cool, or make it too warm, so if somebody's running in and out, so we're, we're still playing with that stuff, but it really is, it's, it's really, they did a nice job designing the building management system and the building, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good luck tonight.
Okay.
Fingers crossed for a quiet night. So, that concludes our budget presentations for tonight, and just to recap for people at home, and also for people, a refresher for people here, the number that we started with, it's, it's a very fluid process, every meeting from now until we pass a budget, we will continue to go at this budget, and we'll come back, I'm pointing, review, we'll come back with new facts and figures, and hopefully we'll come to a, a much happier number than what we started with, so, to be continued.
Can I ask a question, I just noticed this otherwise, I would have asked you before. We didn't hear from athletics tonight, are there athletics enough, are there other departments specific?
They were...
I know they weren't on the, on the agenda, I know they're not, we didn't hear from them, period, but is that, is there a reason why they were not tonight?
I think that what we do is just divvy them up.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, you know, five budget presentations roughly at a time, you know, and I think that, so, Colleen Janino and Craig Hay were obviously quick ones, because their budgets are small, so, you know, we try to balance them.
Okay, all right, that's what I was...
It did originally say on the original document, though, that we...
It was there?
It shifted, you didn't imagine that, I know where you're going, I know where you're going with that.
Thank you.
So I am just going to address for people at home, and for all of us here, also, that we have, we're a little bit out of order, because we don't have the recognitions, people are going to come to our next first December meeting, we don't have any members of the public, so we're not going to do public comment, and our student council, because of the weather, were advised by Mr. Bishop to stay home for tonight, and they can double-report the next time they come. So that will bring us up into, and also, we did appreciate a savings of time, because Dr. Zaleski did the visually impaired teacher, so that, we'll save that later on. Because of the weather and the time, it is possible that we may decide later in the meeting to forego some of the policy and push that off to another meeting, we can decide that as we move along, but that will bring us then into our quarterly financial report.
Thank you. So what you have is similar in format, if you will, to the last time that I reported, the cover sheet shows basically in a summary that right now, we are under budget for payroll, but we are over budget in expenses, so right now, we are running at a negative variance at 112,000. You can see down below the payroll accounts in terms of how we've not only covered what needed to happen for the FTEs that were hired during the year, but we've also had personnel attrition, which means basically hiring savings, so as we've hired, or people have left the district, we've been able to hire at less than what was in the budget, so that was a savings. You can see the columns, as teachers filed and made their lane changes, that came in higher than budget. We had utilization of our salary reserve, the positions that were added after the budget, the positions that were not, either not filled or utilized as part of that shift. Our other payroll variances, basically at this point in time, are long-term sub-estimates, and that will continue to be fluid moving forward. And then that last piece that you've heard spoken about, both from Dr. Zaleski and, and Mr. Person, in terms of transfers from expense accounts into the payroll accounts. This number will continue to change as the year goes on, so just, this is a snapshot in time of where we are right now. So that's your payroll. In the expense side, right now, you can see, really kind of the two big movers are still our out-of-district tuitions, and while the number right now still looks high, I will say that Dr. Zaleski is actively working with a couple of families on some changes, some positively, but she also did mention that we also had another move-in that was a, you know, stay-put, out-of-district placement. So this number will, again, also continue to change, so my thought right now, because we are running a negative variance, is that I would not, at this point in time, advise any changes, and if this were to continue, then my advice to the school committee would be to look to circuit breaker. So, one of the reasons that we've put our circuit breaker more in alignment with what our receivable is, are for instances such as this. But again, this number will continue to change, it's still early in the year, and I know Dr. Zaleski has some things that she knows will change, so. So that's a summary in terms of where we are right now, are there any questions?
So I, in looking at the, I really, I like how you did a little summary, because that's much easier for me to understand. The, the negative variance is that, and I know it does change month to month, and I remember last year, we got to, I think it was January, February, we had a, needed to freeze the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Are we headed that, in that direction, or do we have enough flexibility?
If we were to hold where we are right now, I would say that we'll be okay.
Okay.
Last year, with me being unfamiliar with how principals actually budget and actually spend, I'm a little bit more comfortable with our ability in also keeping an eye to utilization of an account such as circuit breaker.
Great, thank you, if anybody else had...
That was a good question.
Okay.
And you'll see that this summary does include the increase of the TVI, this would have been a quick introduction, so since everything was out of order, this already does include the increase, the TVI, that you voted tonight, that was presented by Dr. Zaleski.
Oh, great, thank you.
So, that's already in here as well.
Great. Thank you. Oh, did you have something?
Yeah, I had one question, which I can't seem to find that particular line item, but there's another one that's interesting, what's the school choice, dollar 86?
So, at some point in time, this is just an inactive revolving account that's just sitting there, it's $86, I don't know where that account came from, but it's just sitting there.
I've had school choice in Hopkinton in my entire recollection of it.
Yeah, so chances are, it's a misnamed account that has missed, misnamed money in it, and so it's just sitting there right now.
Sure. Okay, if anyone else has any questions, I'll try and find the one that, that one-line item.
Are you going to talk about revolving accounts, or later, or are we there now?
Ask away, this is it.
Could you just remind me, and I know you've told me this, and I didn't quite sink in, the column that's offset for the budget, on the revolving accounts, sort of summary page here, and it has the account name, carryover receipts, the last column is offset for the budget. I know there's a connection between what Mr. Person just talked about with buildings and grounds, and some of the revolving account money goes there, could you explain what column that comes from, and how to read that? Because I...
So what, the Munis report that you see is the operating budget, which is general fund money.
Yep.
Okay? In addition to the general fund money are these revolving accounts.
Yep.
So the first one is the athletic revolving, so the athletic revolving collects student sport fees and gate receipts for basketball games, football games, so it, it's collecting those, that account is used to pay some of your athletic coaches.
Yep.
So whereas the budget in gross numbers is probably 500,000, what you see in the Munis report, in terms of the general fund, is 250, because the other 250 is coming out of the sports fees revolving account.
And that's the offset column?
And that's what you...
I'm on the summary page here.
Yes, so that's what your offset is.
Thank you. It would be really wonderful to have like a one or two-page description of each of the revolving accounts, like not to, you know, for a rainy day, like where does the money come from, and where are we allowed to use it? Because I think there are restrictions on some of them, and I don't really, I know, I can infer a lot of it, but I don't think I'm always right, like, in my understanding of things, so.
Right, yep.
If it ever, if you ever have a spare moment, it would be really nice to have that.
Yeah, I thought, you know, Mr. Dumis, right?
Yes.
He had a spreadsheet which explained each of the abbreviations, if you will, he had shared at some point with me, not that it gave a great deal of detail, but at least it explained that, I wondered if that could be a starting point, and if, again, have the spare moment to expand on that at all.
On the revolving accounts?
All of, all of those abbreviations, actually, all the accounts.
All the Munis accounts?
That's right. Yeah, I'm not able to find that particular item, maybe, maybe I'm going to, there was more of clarification that I had, I recall seeing it, but I can't seem to find it right now, so that's fine.
Okay, so with that, there are no more questions?
No.
Moving to your report.
So we'll go to my report. So I am actually reporting on some of the things that appeared in my goals back in the summer. As Ashok told you during his presentation, he updated us on our student population numbers, we are currently at 3,746. When we met in August, we were at 3,721, so since the start of school, we've brought 25 new students into the district, and a major focus for me was how to build a budget around the population growth. So I met with the administrators today, just the building principals, and Jen and Susan, and we talked about some of the things that they currently have in their budgets, and how do we ensure that we are putting teachers in front of students, given the increase in population, because I think that that has to be probably our primary goal. You know, obviously, in our school improvement plans, we have important things like social, emotional learning, and we are bringing in the Bright program, and we are, at this point, sort of unwilling to abandon that work, because we think that it's really important. And as Dr. Zaleski said tonight, it keeps kids in district, and, you know, we are finding that kids come to us with social, emotional, and behavioral needs that we really need to be able to, you know, sort of address in district. We will be meeting again on November 28th, and we'll continue to whittle away at those budgets to ensure that we do something that is fiscally responsible. And the final part of the budget work...
And the final part of the budget work is that Susan and I met with Mr. Camallo today, and we had some conversation today about thinking about doing that student growth in population, just population growth in Hopkinton, kind of a study, so that maybe we could go in with the town and they could look at its impact on other municipal entities, so things like fire, police, and all of that, and we would look at its impact on the school, schools and our building and our programming. So hopefully, we'll be able to put something like that together. We looked at the timeline that Westboro used in two thousand fifteen. They put out an RFP in January, and they had a report done by June. So, that's promising, I think.
That's great.
Yeah, if we can make that happen, it will be wonderful. So, we're not sure we can make it happen, but we're looking, hopefully, that we can make that happen. The next thing is that I had a NISIP meeting yesterday, and so the data portion of the data entry findings was shared with that group, and it's also been shared with the entire administrative team. So, that will, you know, eventually be sort of addressed. We'll take a look at all of that data and try to figure out what it's telling us, and then it will be sort of synthesized so that it's prepared to go to the focus groups when we start working on that in Janu, January, to develop our strategy. At the Cape Conference, we had an opportunity to meet with Desi and a couple of panelists from different districts that has, that have just gone through the strategy development. They were Sagis, Concord Carlisle, and Weston, Wellesley?
Weston, I think.
Weston, you think? And they sort of indicated that we were on a pretty good timeline. They had talked about really, you know, rolling up their sleeves, I think, in probably January, and, you know, after this sort of background legwork was done. And NISIP follows that same, you know, protocol that Desi puts out there. So I think in terms of timeline, we're actually in a good place with that. And then the, let's see, final thing, maybe? Listening tour, I'll be meeting with CPAC very soon. I will be meeting with the five of you very shortly. Admin Council met on Tuesday, and we continued some of our book study work around culture and diversity. And I've just reached out to some of the high school kids, and hopefully, they will be helping me put together something on the fifth of December. So information about that should go out tomorrow from our office. And I think that's all I have.
What does that work related to, working with the high school students?
The diversity work, yeah. So I'm hoping that they are actually putting it together. A theme that I had suggested to them was, if you believe, and then all of the statements after that would sort of be our agenda for that meeting on the fifth. And we will invite everybody who is interested in hearing from the kids and what's happening in school.
That's great.
Great, thank you. All right, then I will go into the school committee chair report, and I just, a couple of quick things before I do the account, the warrants. The budget advisory group did meet for the first official meeting with Mr. Manning and Mrs. Wright, Mr. Camallo, and Dr. Kavanaugh and I, and it was really, it was a preliminary discussion that, from a town perspective, our numbers did seem a little high to them, which we expected, and again, for everybody watching at home as well. Those are very preliminary numbers, and we've already started working down. But that, see, one of the things we had discussed was the population and growth study, and I am happy to hear that has moved forward with the town. And the other thing that they had, Mr. Camallo had talked about was the money from Legacy Farms that will be coming. They did hear back from the developer, and that money is going to come to the town in not the too distant future. So those were both good things. Also, Mina and I had the opportunity to do agenda planning with Dr. Kavanaugh and with Georgette, and that seems like a nice little model to work forward, and we will meet again, the four of us, before we have our next meeting, to plan out and hopefully move forward in a good way.
Nancy, if I may ask a question on the budget advisory group. Was there any sharing of information on, you know, what is the money coming in as part of new growth?
They did not share specific numbers. I'm.
No, we don't know those numbers, no.
It was a preliminary meeting without a whole lot of numbers from really either side, just because we had, we haven't had the opportunity for our individual budget. I think more of a opportunity to plan out some of the collaboration for here going forward.
Sure. And you talked about the five hundred thousand dollar. Based on my understanding, I know there was some back and forth going on, but last I checked, all that money was to come in directly to the schools, right?
So it actually has to go through the town first. It, the way it's written in the host community agreement is that it is to go into a gift, a gift account, I don't want to mess the wording up on it, but it's a gift account for the use of the school, but it goes payable to the town of Hopkinton.
Sure.
So, they're, they are having all the people on the town side take a look at it before, to make sure everything comes in and is allocated appropriately and in the way it was intended.
But it doesn't require any further approvals or what have you, right?
So that's, we're waiting to hear on that. There has been different cases in different towns of how gifts from developers have been allowed to use in terms of case law, so that, we want to make sure that we've, we're following precedents set by our districts.
Sure. And I'm wondering, Ms. Radamich, as you presented the quarterly report, did that account for the five hundred thousand dollars we are expecting to come from Legacy?
The, no, I don't, I don't.
It's not in there?
I don't put in revenue.
Okay.
Right. So this is, this is the budget that has been voted at town meeting.
Right.
And then your, what has been appropriated by the school committee from those revolving accounts.
I see, I see. Yeah, that, that just makes us feel comfortable to me, especially looking at what you have presented for the quarterly report and knowing that this is an additional source of funding if you're waiting for, so, great, thank you.
Correct, and that ultimately, that is something that the five school committee members would have authorization to figure out how the growth has impacted us and how we would want to use it and perhaps plan for some, some year and some the next year and so on.
Thank you.
That was that. And then the other thing is, we, I, we had talked about doing office hours on Sunday at one-thirty. I, I am happy to do that if somebody else is available to do it with me, I would love that, or if two people wanted to do it separate from me, that's fine.
I can join you.
Excellent. And we had talked about location, but didn't, one location we had discussed was doing it here before Godspell. I also had been open to other possibilities, if people wanted to make it in a different place.
What would the temperature be?
Well, the temperature would be on for Godspell, because if we.
In this room, it would be more than six.
I, we would be out there, I would think, so people would see us a little bit like me. I would envision kind of out on those little tables, right out there, so people could walk just slightly away from the, where they're coming in for the production.
So you're saying.
Warmer you would come?
I'll wear my coat, I'll be fine, no matter the temperature. I'm just glad it's, it's here and not in, hey.
On the common.
So Sunday, November eighteenth at one-thirty PM?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And it will be just for one hour, or?
We could stay through intermission, we could stay for however.
I want to watch Godspell.
Yes, definitely.
We could, well, we could, well, another thing we could do is we could watch it and we could come out for the intermission and, or at the end as well, for people.
I think that sounds great.
Okay. All right, so we, if we could maybe send a list serve out, that would be great.
Okay.
I will send that out to Georgette. And then that, oh, and then on the twenty-ninth, we will have the MASC professional development, which is of no cost to us, and we will do that so that we can also have an opportunity to eat over in the conference room over in Central Admin.
So this is what, do you?
This is Thursday, November twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
So the, and the MASC presenter will come at seven, for all those who are interested in dining. We will, we can dine at six-thirty ahead of time. So that was it for my small announcements. And then I also wanted to say I have approved for payment the accounts payable warrants nineteen dash zero four zero, nineteen dash zero four one, nineteen dash zero four two, nineteen dash zero four three, nineteen dash zero four four, nineteen dash zero four five, and nineteen dash zero four six. All warrants have been included in your packet. And I have approved for payment the payroll warrants S one nine zero one zero and S one nine one zero A, which actually, I think, is the one that you approved. And then it, are there liaison reports that anybody has from the last meeting?
I have a really quick one. I went to the Hop Coalition meeting yesterday, and just the key points, I believe the first week of January, like the ninth or the, or I think the ninth, the first, this will be the ninth, ninth or the sixteenth, but I think the ninth was where we're leading, they're going to screen a movie called If They Had Known, which I had an opportunity to screen for Denise with my teenage son, and was it, I thought it was excellent. It was a little bit, it was very real and a little bit raw, and it was really focused on the dangers of mixing prescription medication and alcohol or drugs. And it wasn't preachy, it was, I thought, very effective for ninth grade and up. And they're going to be screening it for high school students. They're trying to pick a date close to school break for college students. There are a lot of universities that screen this film as well, so it is, there can be unintended consequences for students who are taking prescription medication, and then they choose to drink, and they just don't know it's deadly. And then there are also many consequences of taking medications that aren't prescribed to you. So I highly recommend the screening, keep an eye out for the ninth of January.
That's great. Thank you. Others?
I have none.
All right, hearing none, then we will move on to the revision of the two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen school calendar.
All right. So you remember that Lauren DeBeau came to see us about moving kindergarten screening, and the only reason that we need your vote on this is that you have to vote to approve the calendar. And so since we are moving those dates to March eleventh, twenty-sixth, and April fifth, I am looking for your approval.
So motion? So, a motion by Meg, is there a second, second by Mina? All those in favor?
Yes.
Ayes, and it is approved. It moves us into the co-op gymnastics team.
All right. So you saw in your packet that Dee King, who couldn't be here tonight, is looking to run a co-op gymnastics team with the town of Westboro. I think we only have three kids who have signed up for it right now. It would begin immediately, because winter sports will start now at the end of November. The town of Westboro is paying for the coaches, and the coach actually owns the gym, so there is no gym fee. So essentially, this would allow three of our students to take part in a gymnastics team. Westboro is looking to us, because they don't actually have enough students over there to field a team. So if we join in with them, they'll have enough students to field a team, and Jo Anna DeCarlo, who is the athletic director over there, has reached out to Dee, and all the arrangements have been made accordingly. So what we are looking for you to do is to approve the high school co-op gymnastics team with Westboro High School.
So I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I think Dee does such a fantastic job of, you know, finding all these programs and implementing them. It's amazing, her ambition and her vision for the kids, the athletic department, hats off to her. And in the same vein, I think, why don't I see more programs related to, say, science or math? And, you know, I know there are things going on, but I would really like to see a little bit more of that in other areas as well, and maybe, you know, these are opportunities where, you know, this thing that she has presented, it's at no cost to us. So how can we find those programs in other areas as well? I would really like to see that, too, and, you know, Dee is certainly a trailblazer here, and if we can see more of that in other areas, I'd be excited to support those programs as well. But wholeheartedly support this.
Excellent. Thank you. So I apologize, because this is a question that came to me this afternoon, and you may not know the answer to this, and that's fine, we can come back to it, it's not a holdup, but the, in looking at the registration for athletics, it appears that, is Hopkinton taking a registration in athletic fee from these kids as well, because it, the kids also have to pay from Westboro?
I do not know the answer to that.
Just, that was the, it's not a holdup, just.
It was not in the information that we had.
It was not, and I only noticed it when I was registering my own child on the high school athletics. I did see the gymnastics is able to accept registrations, and it appears that Hopkinton is looking for a registration fee, but it also had a note that they would owe an athletic fee to Westboro, and I didn't know if, there's probably a way in the system to opt out of the Hopkinton one, but that would be my hope for the athletes.
Whatever the Westboro fee is, if they pay us, we'll pay them.
Yeah.
I'll just say, I had a few questions, which Ms. King answered very nicely. I wasn't very familiar, I'm just repeating this sort of for the audience. I wasn't familiar, familiar really with the co-op type program. I know we do it with hockey, and I had concerns, given that a lot of this is based on the assumption that it is this coach who is donating her space, and, you know, if this coach moves or decides not to do this any longer, we've then created a team, and we'll want to continue to support that, but then we're taking on cost and so forth. I, you know, I also wasn't really sure where the oversight for a co-op program comes in. Do we have oversight of the coach? Would our athletic director have some review process or have any connections, et cetera? I had kind of a long list of questions. She was very, very gracious in responding to all of them. I feel pretty confident with this particular team, having had these exchanges with her, that it is a very well-vetted coach, and I think, I want to say it was nearly fifteen years she's run the gym in Westboro. They have all the appropriate insurances, et cetera, that we would be concerned about. So I'm sure this is all obvious to you, but I was kind of concerned, you know, on our behalf, that we were outsourcing to a location that was under someone else's oversight. So I felt much better about that, and it seems most likely that this will be a zero-cost endeavor for us. I think they'll take up to twenty-four students, they want to keep it fairly low, there's a coach and an assistant coach. I was concerned about spotting a gymnast on the uneven bars, you've got one coach here, and someone's on a balance beam, and, but it seems to be really well thought out. I really appreciated Ms. King taking the time to provide the information, so.
Yeah, I thought you did a really nice job.
She did. On short turnaround, while also balancing playoff schedules.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, then, if there are no other questions.
Jen was saying something?
Well, I was gonna just, I mean, your, your point about the user fee is, that would be my one, I mean, I love everything about this except that, because the kids shouldn't have to pay double.
I agree.
So, I mean, I would love to vote on this tonight and say yes, but I really would like to know if we're asking these kids to pay double.
So, if it would be permissible in the motion to exclude the, to add wording to prevent these, that students only pay one user fee?
Yes, absolutely.
They either pay ours or theirs, however that works out.
It doesn't say that in the memo, though, right?
It does not say in the memo, but if you go onto the high school athletics registration, it, the first page directs you to pay the two hundred dollar athletic fee to Hopkinton, for, that's for all of the Hopkinton high school teams, and middle school teams for that matter. And then it says under that that they would also need to pay Westboro Athletics their athletic user fee, which I don't, I'm not sure.
And good for looking, because when I read the memo, it didn't, to me, it didn't register as a double, it said you would pay for Westboro.
It didn't, and, and it just, it, it only happened to come up as I was in my own personal business. So in terms of crafting a, the wording on that, without making it too awkward, unless you had, do you have specific wording you like to add, or you want me to take a?
Uh, no, but I can think about it really fast.
So the motion could be to approve the high school co-op gymnastics team and have Hopkinton athletes pay one athletic fee or something of that.
How about with the stipulation?
With the stipulation.
That students pay only one user fee?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Exactly what you said.
Write that down, right?
Okay. So I would seek a motion then, to approve the high school co-op gymnastics team with the stipulation that Hopkinton athletes pay only one athletic user fee.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Meg, second by Mina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is so moved. And we already did the teacher, the visually impaired need, and that brings us down to the general food service worker.
Thank you. So as you know, we are in the, you know, early stages of a new food service director, moving away from outsourcing. One of the areas that we're looking at, so the good news is our meal counts are going up, we're getting good feedback in terms of the quality of the food, so these are all good, positive things. And one of our areas that is a very busy place is the middle school. The middle school kitchen itself is probably the most. The middle school kitchen itself is probably the most challenging in terms of both the setup and the size and everything, and the number of students that we're serving. So, in an effort to really move these kids through the line faster, what we're looking for is another worker that would be part-time, that really would be on the line, helping to serve and move the kids through. The middle school also has probably the shortest amount of time between lunches, so once you put the kids through, you need to get your next, you know, trays up and refill. So, it's a very busy kitchen, and just as a reminder, this is not something that has any impact to the school operating budget, the food service is a self-supporting revolving account. So, this position, even though it's an additional position, would be absorbed within that food service account.
So, I had a couple comments, I didn't want to cut anyone off. But, one is, this was a really good move that you had brought the suggestion forward, I have heard only good things about the changes that have been made this year. The middle school, I have heard the feedback that more kids are buying, the lines are quite long, and in terms of looking at social, emotional stuff, that break for kids is important to have during lunch.
Absolutely.
And when they're waiting in line for the bulk of their lunch period, and have to throw away part of their lunch because they didn't have enough time to eat it, that's not a good break. So, I would support this, but I would want to hear from, if anybody else had any...
No, I feel the same way, I think I read comments on social media where parents were talking about this, so this is a very good move. Thank you for listening and putting this in place.
All right, then if there are no more questions or comments, I would seek a motion to approve the general food service worker for the middle school.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meg, second by Mina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, it's unanimous, and it so carries. So, at this point, we, it is 9:30, we have one, two policies, and we have the, we definitely have to do that overnight approval, I would say, yes?
Yes.
And then, we can, do people have the appetite to push through, or do you want to push the policies off to the next?
I think either way is...
I think we can go through this, it shouldn't take so long, I would think.
We're going to actually end up still being ahead of schedule, would be my guess.
Right, let's keep at it.
Okay, let's keep at it then, so we can go ahead and go in order then. So, the first policy we have is school committee policy JJE, student fundraising activities, and that is a second reading. I did not receive any feedback, I don't know if you received any.
We did not. And I think that the major change that was made here, which was really not a major change, is that originally, this policy said that proposals would be submitted to the building principal and to the superintendent, and I think that we felt like submitting it on both levels would be overkill, so we just reduced it to the building principal in those three paragraphs, paragraphs three, four, and six.
Dr. Kavna, I just have one question, I got a comment from a parent talking about, you know, going to watch their child play and having to pay $10 ticket fees every time. Is there any guideline on, you know, how we charge?
Maybe we better ask Mrs. Rothermich. Do you want to talk about gate receipts?
So, typically, I mean, the gate receipts are part of your athletic revolving, so typically the gate receipts are, you know, spread equally, so what we're charging for the TVL league, the Tri Valley League, so if somebody, another school is charging X for basketball, we try to line up with that and not be over-absorbing it.
Typically, it's evening, evening gate receipts, like afternoon games don't tend to have a ticket or fee.
Right, yeah, it'd be evening.
Right, like I said, you know, this is a comment from a parent, and, you know, some may qualify for perhaps some break there with regard to the tickets and whatnot, does that happen?
That I'm not sure of, and I do sympathize, I'm a parent of a basketball player as well, so I know exactly what this is like. It, you know, there are certain things that can be done, what I've seen done in other districts as a, for instance, instead of gate receipts one night, bring an item for the food pantry, as a, for instance. You know, so there can be some things that we can look at in terms of trying to be creative. The unfortunate thing about it is we rely on those gate receipts, those become directly part of your budget in the revolving account. Absolutely, I hear it though.
It is interesting, though, because it isn't actually very consistent, I mean, we'd be thrilled if you came to watch a soccer game, nobody really comes to those games, and we don't tend to, we had a few night games, we don't tend to charge, I'm not sure why. Or we didn't this year with, I really don't know the rationale, I also went to a volleyball game, JV game, close to five, but it was the JV game, and I had to pay for that. So, it's a little bit uneven, concerts tend to be free, except they tend to do maybe the pops, and sometimes they do one concert that is a fundraiser, they'll identify in advance. Plays you pay for, seniors get in free all the time.
You never pay for a swim meet, except for postseason.
Yeah, it is interesting though.
That might play some thing that people's interest.
Paid by sitting there.
Yes, there's always a price.
But, I think to Mina's point, and this would be outside the scope of this particular policy, but it would be worth taking a look at if we are making sure that tickets and whatnot are available for any family who qualifies through, I don't know if, who the best person to handle that, if it would be the coach or somebody, so that families are able to go without that being a financial hardship for those.
Right, and, you know, if someone walks up to your office and says, "It's too high for me," could they still qualify without going through all the legal paperwork? Something for your consideration.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, good points. So, just to bring it back to this particular policy, there were no specific comments on this, and was there anything else other than moving the superintendent's office out?
I don't think so, I think it was just the superintendent.
Are there other questions or comments, or is there a motion by somebody?
So moved.
Second.
So, a motion by Meg and a second by Mina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, and that passes as well, which moves us to policy GBEBD, which is, it's hard to say.
It is.
Online fundraising and solicitations crowdfunding.
Yes, so you may remember, the last time we looked at this on October 18th, it was an enormously long policy, and it had so many things in there, and I think when the policy subcommittee got together, we thought that we really just could take this thing down to bare bones, because the one thing that we want to say to people is that we are not a district that will be using crowdfunding. And this does not mean that a teacher can't use something like signup genius or one of those kinds of online things to get classroom supplies, so if you want consumables like tissues or post-it notes, that's absolutely still within your purview, but things like, you know, GoFundMe and DonorsChoose and that kind of stuff, that's not something that Hopkinton was interested in permitting teachers to use. So, this is it in its most simplistic form.
Hats off again to the policy subcommittee.
Took a lot of conversation to get to, why don't we just cut everything but this one paragraph?
I love the way it has come here.
A little too light.
Yeah, right, you know.
I did have one comment, and which always excites me because people are paying attention, which is that in the first sentence there, there are two is's, that doesn't sound right, but you know what I mean, crowdfunding, and that perhaps taking the first is out to say crowdfunding, comma, defined as any online service used for the solicitation of goods, services, or money from a large number of people via the internet or other electronic network, and then all the other stuff, comma, is not permitted, just to keep that second is.
Good catch.
Very good.
And while we are at it, could we say teachers may use online communication tools, or is it can?
I think may is probably the...
More appropriate. And I don't think we need to bring it back just for these changes.
Okay, do you want that? That looks like she's ambivalent on that?
No, 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 no.
All right, so is there a motion then on this server?
So, one quick question, okay, great, so with regard to the cross-reference, I think we had a conversation about linking it back to the one where we had received like the HEF-like policies, that you have to go through a few things and whatnot.
Yeah, was it gifts related?
I think it was.
We did cross-reference.
Yeah, so it's on there, yeah.
So, you have, great, all right.
Because we've spent more time on it than I thought we would, I've noticed another punctuation error, it's not my fault. So, the comma after a consumable classroom supply should go after the parenthetical remark following it, just saying it.
Yes, you're right.
Yes, absolutely.
Why do I have to say you're right, professor Tyler?
All right.
I'm off and rolling.
Well done.
Good night.
And would you also like that to say in times of extenuating circumstances?
Oh, my goodness.
In that second sentence?
There you go.
It was a little bit, yeah.
Some editing and revision.
Yes, okay. So, now we have four typographical changes to make, right?
I think those are still all within the purview of passing it tonight.
I think so too, excellent.
So, can I say so moved now?
You can so move.
With those four tiny grammatical changes.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Meg, second by Mina, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, and that is also so moved, and that brings us to the overnight final approval form for the Hopkinton High School trip, that I believe is this July 2nd, oh, wow, it's just a nice thought to think about, July when it's snowing out, sorry.
I have a quick question. Are school committee members allowed to go as chaperones?
I was thinking the same.
I actually think perhaps we should...
There are four open lines under the chaperone box, so I feel...
Perhaps we should preview the trip ahead of time.
Yes.
The only thing that, if you do want to present before I make a comment, do you have anything you wanted to say about it?
No, I was only going to say that it's a trip to Athens, Rome, and Sorrento, July 2nd to July 15th, and Charlotte Shire, and Valerie von Rosenvind.
So, I am a little bit like a broken record with this, but I do like the trips, because I know that the school is not able to provide the financial assistance with international tours the way we are with some things, but my understanding is that EF Tours does have inability for students to apply for some financial assistance through them directly.
They don't have flights scheduled yet for this, it says, right? So, this is an approximate cost per student, or is it the maximum cost per student? Or does the agency set the cost?
Well, I think that the flight scheduled yet might just be over there, and maybe I'm wrong about this, but I think that it might just be over there because of the dates, so they could switch back to July 1 or push out to July 16, that's the only thing that I'm thinking that means. I think that when EF gives you a cost, it's typically, that's carved in stone.
And EF, I know, does take care of those flights themselves.
This is great.
So, they probably have some, isn't it?
Sorry, I know there's the cost aspect of it, but just the fact that we are offering such a thing, and, you know, thinking about the flights, and it's a two-week program, that sounds very reasonable based on, you know, the expense if you tried to do this by yourself, that's where I'm coming at it from. And just the fact that kids will get to go together and, you know, all the things that are listed out here, I would love to hear back from the kids once they're back.
This particular Student Global Leadership Summit, I know they do, I think, every other year, that the high school runs it, and that it offers some really great leadership opportunities and things that they are able to do, that they don't always have on all of the trips. All the trips that we approve, I think, are outstanding, but this one I am particularly fond of. But it would be nice to have somebody come in to talk about some of the trips afterwards.
Yes, would love to hear that from kids.
So, absent any, if there are any questions or comments, I don't want to jump over anybody, I would seek a motion to approve the trip for the Student Global Leadership Summit in July of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meg, second by Mina, all those in favor?
Yes.
Ayes, and it so carries, and it moves, and I would next seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, motion by Meg, second by Mina, all those in favor?
Yes.
Ayes, and so, we are adjourned at 9:49 p.m. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is on December 6th here in the high school at 7:00 p.m., and we will take up some more of our budget presentations at that time, and then we also will have our November 29th professional development opportunity. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Thank you.